Yeah, I think that would be good to put that down there. An additional step to keep people out of there.
I'll have to get with Alex to get him transported down there.
Okay. Even if we can't get that.
Zach, we got a delivery, I believe, at some kind of flagpole or something. Do I need to just let Alex know?
Yeah, yeah, those are for Public Works.
Okay, thanks.
Zach, I'm gonna put this phone on the charger and reconnect with another phone. I hope it works.
Okay.
Dial in the same way I did originally?
Yes, yeah, just like you did earlier.
Okay, thanks.
You know, bro. Hello? Hello?
I switched phones. I didn't even have to dial. It picked it up. I don't know how that happened.
Well, welcome back. Everybody here now, just looking to make sure I see all these pretty faces. The mic's here, okay. All right, I just want to confirm, did we agree to Friday morning, everybody, while I still got it fresh in my mind?
Yeah, what time?
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock Friday. Yes, ten o'clock Friday morning, everybody good with that? Next Friday?
Yeah. Yeah, what's that date?
Twenty-second.
Yep, good.
That Friday, the twenty-second, Zach?
Yes, that's correct.
Payroll Friday? Hmm.
Multitasking. I think Alex is gonna be trying to join us in just a moment. I don't think he's joined us yet, but we'll go ahead, if everybody's ready, we'll go ahead and get started. Alrighty, so what I'll do is run through just a brief overview of the budget, and then I know Commissioner Martin had mentioned each commissioner kind of going around and giving their comments, so I think that's probably a good way we can go about it. So the way I've got this laid out is that you can see the FY nineteen-twenty budget on the left-hand column, and you can see the FY twenty-twenty-one budget on, right next to it, to the right. So starting off with Governing Board, this current fiscal year's budget is seventy-eight thousand five forty-one, and the FY twenty-twenty-one budget, that is sixty-four thousand seven ninety-two. In General Administration, we're going from three thirty-six nine twenty-one in FY nineteen-twenty to three hundred forty-five thousand five hundred in FY twenty-twenty-one. In Parks and Recreation for FY nineteen-twenty, we've got fifty-eight thousand six sixty-one going to twenty-six thousand one ninety. Planning and inspections going from twelve thousand seven hundred eighty-eight in FY nineteen-twenty to thirty-one thousand three hundred and four. And the Public Works Department going from two hundred ninety thousand two hundred eighty-three in the current fiscal year to two hundred six thousand one hundred sixty-two. And Powellville Street Maintenance going from seventy-five thousand five fifteen to seventy-eight thousand one fifty-one. And Public Grounds Utilities and Buildings going from one hundred twenty-two thousand and thirty-nine dollars to ninety-four thousand four hundred twenty-one. And the Police Department going from five hundred forty-one thousand nine hundred ten dollars to five hundred seventy-three thousand six eighty-two. And in the Environmental and Emergency Preparation Line going from two hundred eleven thousand one ninety-two to one hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred twenty-five. Some of the developments since I originally sent this budget out back in March, based off of our ad war valuation, this is a revalue year. In the current budget, we've got a projected revenue of eight hundred two thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars. Based off of the latest information we've gotten from the Tax Office, we're looking at approximately eight hundred twenty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty. There were still several pending valuation appeals, and I think that valued over several hundred thousand dollars. So that could impact this amount a little bit. So the originally March projected amount of eight twenty-eight one seventy-one, at the present time, based on the data we have, would be eight hundred twenty-one thousand nine thirty. That might go down a little bit more, based off of when the Board of Legalization and Review finalizes any determinations on the valuation. So we should be getting an update, I would expect, in the first week of June on what those, hopefully finalized, numbers are gonna be for our property tax valuation. With the COVID-nineteen stuff going on, we originally were projecting three hundred ten thousand seven hundred ten dollars in our local option sales tax revenue. However, you know, with the potential economic impacts, we're looking at adjusting by about ten percent, which is what's being talked about across the state. I don't know if we're gonna have to do ours as much, given the fact that as the beaches have reopened, we've really seen a huge uptick in activity with folks coming down here and spending money. So the actual budgetary impact may not be as significant as it will be for other parts of the state, but taking a conservative approach to budgeting for that, taking ten percent off of what our last fiscal year's revenue was, we still would be four thousand dollars less than our projected revenue than what, you know, ten percent off of this current fiscal year's revenue would be. So doing a conservative estimate of, you know, two hundred seventy-nine thousand six thirty-nine, that'd be if you took the projected three-ten-seven-ten and took ten percent off of that. But I think we're safe leaving the three-ten-seven-ten in there, because looking at our revenues for this current fiscal year for the local option sales tax, we've brought in three hundred forty-nine thousand two hundred sixty dollars in the current fiscal year. So I think, looking at the budget, I think putting three hundred ten thousand seven ten is still a safe estimate. You know, but depending on how things go over the next several weeks, we'll know better, and it's hard to forecast the exact economic impacts of what this might do. But I think three-ten-seven-ten is on the conservative side. I think we should be safe, you know, with that estimate there. They've also told us that for the franchise tax, we might see some impacts on that as well. So originally, back when this budget was first developed, we were looking at a hundred twenty-five thousand being our projected full revenue for the utilities franchise tax. Taking ten percent off of that would put us at a hundred twelve thousand five hundred. And if we adjust the cable franchise tax, we would be at five thousand five hundred and eighty. So that would impact our numbers a little bit, but not as significant as some of the other places around the state, since we have such a tourism-driven economy, and with the uptick in visits that, you know, we're seeing, especially on the weekends here, I think our impact will be a little bit less than some of the other places throughout the state. So some of the highlights, I think, to sort of cover in here, some of the things I want to make sure that we touch on would be in the Police Department and looking at doing a hybrid position, which would be combining, potentially having the code enforcement position and a police officer part-time position meshed into one. And that would allow us some cost savings and keep us at seven and a half officers. I know that Chief has requested doing, going to eight officers, and I'll let him speak to that further once we discuss his department. And I definitely think that's a goal that we should have in mind and we should be shooting for. However, you know, based on some of the conversations I've had, I've heard that, you know, people would like to see some, you know, compromise on that and go into kind of a hybrid officer position would be a good way to get it towards where we need to go in terms of coverage and staffing level. Also having here a CPI increase per our contract with GFLR, with Waste Industries. So a little bit of an increase there in the environmental line. And those are probably the main things that we have that are significant in this year's budget. Obviously, in terms of the enterprise discussion, that's gonna impact some of our numbers. And we didn't do a lot of capital outlay in this year, so also gonna want some feedback on that in terms of, you know, if we don't go the enterprise route, we should be putting some additional funds aside for capital outlay for future vehicle purchases, so that's just another consideration. But projecting doing a two percent cost of living adjustment across the board, and that's comparable to what a lot of the other towns in the area are doing. And then doing a three percent merit increase for employees that we've identified in some of the departments that we feel that we would like to move them up and recognize their performance. I think it's also important to make sure that we're staying competitive with some of the other towns in the area. And granted that we can't compete with some of the municipalities that have a much larger tax base, but looking at comparable municipalities that have a similar population and similar property valuation. We're definitely on the low end of the scale across the board, so that's pretty much my initial run-through. And then, I'm not sure if Alex is on the line. I think he is. Alex, are you here now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so my thought process was, while we have Chief and Alex on the line, would be when we're discussing the departments, to focus on those two departments first, so that way they can go back out there and get back to work on things. So kind of what I was hoping to do is maybe let's talk about the Public Works Department's budget first. And just see if there's any questions for Alex about the Public Works Department's budget that we could address now. And if there aren't any, then we can let him get back out there and get back to work.
I'll just mention everybody and go down the line in the appearance they're appearing on my screen. So Jim, do you have any?
Okay, I'm looking for Alex. This is annoying.
Sounds like you got two microphones on at the same time.
I'm trying to have the speakerphone. Getting feedback. Something that's curious, it's a small item, but sidewalk maintenance repair, two thousand bucks. Don't we have a fund someplace with a bunch of sidewalk maintenance, twenty minutes, that we could just move into? To pull out of that? Do we have to actually budget something? Separate for?
Jim, you sounded like Black Sabbath with a reverb.
I was saying, use the telephone.
Okay, I think I do need a microphone. What I was saying was, sidewalk and trail maintenance, two thousand bucks, not a big number. But don't we have a fund, the MOTV special that generates money specifically for sidewalk maintenance?
I hear you, Zach.
Oh, there we go. So the motor vehicle special tax funds come in to the budget as a revenue, and then this is one of the lines where they would be expended out. So that's reflective of that MOTV tax, is that annual maintenance that takes place, and that's edging, you know, the trail, treating the, you know, grass intrusion on the trail, any sort of other incidental repairs that come up on the trail and the sidewalks in town.
Okay, so that's funny, that's two grand is actually coming from the MOTV.
Yeah, so the MOTV, it goes into the general fund, and then this is a demonstration of where it's coming back out of that general fund. This is a reflection of that.
Okay, I guess that's confusing me, because I thought the MOTV special, the five bucks tag, was dedicated to sidewalks. That was the purpose of it. So why would it go into the special, the general fund?
So it's kept in a separate account, in terms of how it's accounted for on Sandy's end. And what I'm saying is that this would be where that's expended out through this particular line would reflect that. And so each year, we bring in ten thousand nine hundred forty on our motor vehicle special tax, and this would be a portion of that. And there are some bigger capital projects that we're discussing, like what was mentioned in the weekly update on Monday.
I guess then we, I don't see anything for capital improvement contribution.
Yeah, so so in this year, we don't have anything reflected for the capital items. And that, the thought process behind that was that we wanted to see which direction we might go with the Enterprise Program. Because those numbers, if we're gonna go with the Enterprise route and be able to replace some of those aging vehicles in Public Works, I believe the oldest vehicles are, I think it's a nineteen ninety-four. If we're able to start replacing some of those under the Enterprise Program, we'd probably create a separate line for that, and we wouldn't be putting money away on the capital side, at least under the vehicles. But that was, we wanted to wait and see what direction we're gonna go with the, if we're gonna go the Enterprise route, or if we're gonna need to go the capital improvement route. But what the decision of the Board is, you know, in terms of whether to proceed with the Enterprise Fleet Management Program, it's gonna directly affect the budget in terms of whether we're gonna put money aside in the capital lines. Because I would definitely recommend if we do not go the Enterprise Fleet Management Program, then we need to put money in the capital outlay, so that we can continue to maintain our capital improvement program.
So at this point, there is no capital improvement money, and there's no Enterprise money. So we're short a big chunk here.
Yeah, so it's gonna be, we'll have to make some adjustments in there to reflect that.
I was curious about the Powellville. Where am I? Is there any change in the income on the Powellville?
Yeah, so the legislature approved, I believe it was a five percent increase for municipalities for the Powellville distribution. And that's reflected in that increased amount, because we're getting additional Powellville revenue coming in in the next fiscal year.
Okay. I guess this is, oh my god.
Okay, Jim. Jeff? Got your mic on, Jeff?
Thank you, Jim. A couple of those questions you asked, that's some questions I had as well. One question I also have on salaries and wages on overtime. Notice for that, the Public Works and Police Department, there's no, there's nothing in that area, which I know they do have overtime, so where's that money coming from?
The Public Works typically does not get any overtime. We typically don't have a situation where they would get overtime. In the Police Department, we have six thousand dollars.
That'd be the same question, though.
Yeah, there's six thousand dollars in overtime in the Police Department. The thought process being there, hopefully we can keep that number down if we were able to do a hybrid position, because we'll be able to get more coverage and not have to call people in and get overtime hours as a result. Because that's what we're running into right now, is that if we don't have enough officers to work, we're just having to work the regular officers more, and they get more overtime as a result, which ends up costing us more in the long run, doing that.
On the Christmas bonus, how is that money calculated for the department?
That's a set amount. Each year, that's two hundred fifty dollars per employee. That was set, I think, several years back. I think that amount was set by the Board, but yeah, two hundred fifty dollars per employee for the Christmas bonus.
Whether they're new or senior employees?
I believe that.
Regardless of their time at the town?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah.
And taxes and 401K, everything comes out of that, so they don't actually get two hundred and fifty dollars, of course.
Okay. On Public Works, is there any training such as money set aside for trainings and for certifications, such for fall protection, keeping these guys safe, something that could be certified in? I don't see anything here for training and education, certification, money set aside for that. Is there other money that comes elsewhere where they can get that type of money? So they can get some certifications and training to keep them safe and the town safe?
Yeah, so under twenty-five dot seven eighty, that's training and classes. We've got some NCDOT safety training in there, as well as some of the OSHA training courses.
That's enough money to, for those type of classes?
For what? I mean, we could always use more under that line, so we can send them to more training, but I don't recall how much we spent last year on that. Because we did send everybody to a course in Jacksonville. So generally, we try to do the courses that are local, so we save on the travel costs. And then, they're usually not too expensive. And we've also had our folks doing a training through the league. It's free, and they can do it online. So we have a safety training program that's in place, where they have to complete a certain amount of safety training each year. And then we keep up with their.
I got you.
Yeah, yeah. So that was something we've implemented, that they go through a certain amount of safety training, and we assign modules for them to complete. And then we also do spot safety checks. And then, everybody, when they start work, they're issued their PPE, and they sign an agreement that acknowledges that they've received their PPE. We've done a lot on the safety side to ramp that up.
I just want to make sure they have what they need to maintain their safety on the job facility. I'm good.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Steve?
Jim, on your question, can you hear me, Jim? Okay, on your, I just want to point something out on your question about capital outlay for Public Works. I'm looking at the ten-year capital improvement program. The next vehicle that was scheduled to be replaced is the ninety-four Ford F-350, with the first capital outlay scheduled for this budget year. That's the only, that's the next vehicle to be. So I agree with what you're saying. And Zach, it's kind of confusing. We're thinking about leasing, but in the interim, we have no figures to go by. If we went with capital outlay for buying our own vehicles versus Enterprise, we don't have anything to kind of show as we go type thing. It's kind of confusing. I think there was too much, maybe certainty that we're gonna go with this Enterprise, when in fact that, also, I know this is not a Public Works budget item, but it is something, twenty thousand dollars that Public Works is asking for, over and above the thirty thousand they have in capital outlay for a building. I would like to talk to Alex about that for a second. Alex, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Did you get estimates for that, that building?
Yes.
Okay. Well, let me ask you this, Alex. The building is gonna be used to store vehicles in, is that correct?
Yes, for tractor vehicles.
Why couldn't we add a lean-to, metal lean-to on the existing building with three sides and accomplish the same thing, a lot cheaper price?
Yes.
I just got a problem with spending fifty thousand dollars on a building that does nothing but store equipment when a carport is adequate for that, with three sides on them. They sell them every day, they can erect them in one day, hurricane wind, strength winds. But I know this is in public buildings, but I'm asking you the question, because you're the one that's asking for the building, is that correct?
Yes, it's been in the works for a while now.
Okay. Zach, what I'm asking is, fifty thousand dollars seems like a lot of money to be spending on a building just to store a few pieces of equipment. And I understand the premise of separating your work area, having worked in shops basically all my life, from storage. It's a clutter over there. But I think that, in my opinion, one of those freestanding, three-sided garages can accomplish the same thing. Is that something you can look into and maybe, or?
Yeah, Alex and I have been working on that the last couple of weeks, with getting some additional prices on different options. We want to make sure whatever we put out there is gonna, you know, obviously meet the wind zone requirement. But we're looking for something that Um, but we're looking for something that's in the lower range of that, um, that price range. Um, if we go, I think we had one that was spec'd out. Um, and Alex, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but this, it was a building that was spec'd out with electricity and everything else in there. Um, and that was coming in at like ninety, ninety-eight thousand.
Yes, sir.
I think we're, we're also looking at, you know, something that's more towards what you're talking about Commissioner Martin with something that's more basic, um, and ideally more in the thirty to forty thousand dollar range. But, uh, we definitely want something that's going to meet the wind zone rating, uh, for this area. That's our, our primary objective for it. And I mean, the primary purpose is going to be for storage of, of vehicles, get those out of the element.
I understand that, uh, but I, I, knowing a little bit about those buildings, uh, it's just a matter of an engineer stamp. And I'm sure when Mike King gets his turn, he can vouch for that. Uh, very little upgrade as far as meeting the codes. It's more or less a paperwork thing. Maybe a few, uh, trusses here and there beefed up, but they do them every day. I, I just don't. With the uncertainty of our revenue and, and, and that's one thing I wanted to point out too. I, I think we need to be prepared to, uh, tighten up the belt here a little bit. Um, I, I just have a problem with the twenty thousand. As a matter of fact, if it comes down to vote, I, I wouldn't support it. I would, I would ask, I would ask, uh, Alex to get a, a, an estimate for something within that thirty thousand he already has in capital outlay. Uh, I think I have one more. Let's see. Getting back to your, get Zach, in your opening comments, you mentioned merit raises. Can you give us a total figure on, on what you're asking for for merit raises?
Yes, I could give me, um, once we go, I, I can give it to you by the end of the meeting. I just have to tally it up.
That, that's just another, that's another positive issue. You've got it, you've got it in there, but we can't see it. Uh, last year we gave merit raises. Uh, is this a thing you're going to ask for every year? I mean, uh, just another thing that's cola. I just read in the paper yesterday, Indian Beach is giving one point five percent. Why are we? I mean, you're, 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 we're going to price ourself out of business here. I want to take care of the employees. And I understand there's a, uh, a serious, uh, shortage on, on pay in some departments compared to other towns. I would like to know the, uh, the total amount of merit money that you're asking for, merit raise money.
Yeah, I can do that since I'm sharing my screen right now. Um, when we go to the next comment, I can stop sharing it and do the math on that.
Okay. And I'm like Jim is on this MOTV. That's a dedicated, uh, uh, tax, if you will. I, I refer to it a lot of times as a gouging tax. It's a tax that was, was thrown on the backs of permanent residents several years ago. Uh, and, and within the language, the, the money is supposed to be spent yearly as collected. And we haven't done that. Uh, I know, you know, that is a revenue and we have, we're not discussing revenue right now. But I'm going to advocate for, 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 uh, unless we start spending that for what it's meant for, such as a project, uh, that we have discussed, I'll be advocating to, uh, it's not a fair tax. It's not fair to tax permanent residents when the part-time residents enjoy the same services we do and don't have to pay that tax. I know you weren't part of that. You weren't here then. Uh, I know who the author of that was and, and I have talked to them and I've talked to two commissioners that voted for it. And both are having, have had second thoughts, uh, and wish they wouldn't have voted for that. And I just want to throw that out there. Uh, I had those conversations this week, as a matter of fact. Uh, so, so anyway, I, I, I just, I got a problem. Understand why there's two thousand dollars on the lot item under public works. MOTV, just like Jim mentioned, was, uh, formulated to take care of, uh, of that trail, uh, sidewalk maintenance, not trail maintenance, sidewalk maintenance. There's no, I don't think there's a mention of trail in there. That's all, that's all I have. The, the building, the, uh, uh, merit raises, uh, or the, or is, is all I have for public works. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Steve. Uh, Don, you're up.
My first question has already been asked and that had to do with the, uh, capital outlay. Nothing there. I've got a question. I think I know what the answer is, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Under salaries and wages, three full-time employees, which is what we have had there in the past, why, why has it dropped almost eleven thousand dollars? As to what we're paying three full-time employees?
So with, uh, Alex moving into the supervisor position, um, he's at the starting range in that position. Um, and then with us hiring in a new technician, they're also starting at the, at the hiring rate. So that's a decrease based off of that.
Okay. That, that's the only question I have that hasn't already been discussed.
Zach, we're discussing this. What are you doing? Are you going, are we going to vote on any of this stuff, Mayor? We're going to vote on any of these, uh, suggestions of how we're going to do this? In the past, we voted on it. Uh, are we going to do that today or wait until the next meeting?
Uh, I see no need to vote on anything today. We're pretty much, this is just gathering information. Everybody get their initial questions out. That way, if you've got any more, uh, like your question about, uh, uh, total for a particular lot item or whatever, then he can have time to get his information together and, uh, then the next time we meet, uh, possibly could vote on it then, if everybody is okay with that.
Thank you.
Don, is that, if that's all you had, Don, we'll move on to Mike.
Yeah, that's all I have. I'm, I'm done with public works.
Okay. All right. Mr. King.
Okay. Um, regard to the, the building at public works, uh, Steve said a freestanding three-sided. I would, uh, strongly suggest a shed type, uh, look into a shed type building that has the wall of the existing building as the back wall on two sides. You need a truss over the thing to store, um, equipment. Uh, Alex could look at that and it, it might, it doesn't take up as much space and it takes advantage of a wall we all have. And of course it's going to have to meet, uh, wind things. So that would be my, that, that would be my input on that. Um, second, uh, it's been commented on, on, on across the board, two percent in merit increases. My recommendation is one percent across the board and allow the town manager to decide on, uh, merit, uh, increases, uh, based on his experience and he's closest to the performance. All right, moving right along. Uh, item twenty-five, seven, sixteen in public works. What's the great increase in health insurance?
So let me, how do I phrase this? Um, I'm trying to be careful about the personnel side of that. So a former employee of the town.
And I know how that works. Is it because vendors and stuff are stuff that we had?
No, no. So a former employee of the town had their own insurance through a former employer, right? That employee that doesn't work for the town anymore. Basically we have to account for three. In the past, it was two employees in that department that we were paying health insurance on. And now we've got three that were doing health insurance.
Okay.
That's the reason for the increase.
Okay. Uh, number two, item twenty-five, nine, fifty, and that's the debt service on the truck. Uh, my input to you on that, Zach, is this, uh, that if this budget comes out where we are, uh, reasonably well balanced or have some money that we give back, that we avoid paying, uh, car payments, uh, on something that we have ample capital reserves to pay off. Uh, you never borrow money if you have it. Um, let's see, I think I got one more and I'll be done. Um, the, you, you talked to, yeah, you talked, uh, it doesn't seem this to be the right place, but you had mentioned that, uh, the, the, uh, a hybrid officer in the police department. Should we do that when we get to police department? Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, that'd probably be better. Yeah.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay, thanks, Mike. All right, let's move forward, Zach.
All right. So if nobody else has anything for Alex, then, uh, Alex, uh, what's your get back to work?
I have one thing, I have one thing to say to Alex. Let's say, Alex, you've been doing an awesome job, what you've been doing with the public work, keep up the good work, buddy. All right. Thanks, sir.
Hey, Alex, uh, this is Mike King. Uh, I, I haven't actually looked at the structure of your building, but I, I'll set some time up in the, within the next week to come up and look at the place and look and see if something could be made to work to store that equipment.
All right. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Zach? Zach?
One thing I'll mention. Yeah, go ahead.
I can, um, answer the questions on how much the total is on the two percent cola and the three percent increase if you would like me to.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Um, on the two percent cola for all the departments, it's twelve thousand, thirty-three dollars and forty cents. And the three percent cost of living is eleven thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cents. If you add those together.
Would you, Sandy, would you repeat that again a little slower, please?
The cola, two percent cola for all the departments, twelve thousand, thirty-three dollars and forty cents. And I can send you a copy of what of my spreadsheet. And the three percent cost of living is eleven thousand.
Is cost of living.
You mean, you mean merit raises, right, Sandy? That, that's where you're throwing me. You've given us two, two colas, cost of living, uh.
Okay. I'm sorry. My wording is a little different. The three percent is eleven thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you, Sandy.
Would you like the total of the two or you prefer them broken out?
Uh, no, I can add those up from my head. Thank you.
Okay.
Is, is the two percent or the three percent merit raise?
That'd be two percent, based off two percent cola and three percent merit.
Uh, in, in addition to that, it would be great if we could see the list of the merit raises. How much for each employee?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble understanding Commissioner Naylitz.
Yeah, that, that would actually be for Zach and probably not, uh, in this forum. But to provide, provide the commissioners with a listing of the employees' merit raises and, and the amount of those raises.
Yeah, we, we could do that at a future meeting, um, and provide that. Um, I know under the, yeah, and we probably have to be in a, we might have to be in a closed session if we talk about any specifics about the nature of many of those as it pertains to any specific employee.
Because not everybody gets the merit increases. Not it.
Zach, as I mentioned to you on the phone.
That's not a three percent merit, not a factor.
Uh, I mentioned to you on the phone the other day, uh, and I, I did request a closed session, uh, meeting during one of the budget processes. Is that something you need to tell the commissioners now that I requested that or?
Sounds like you're telling the board that right now.
I'm requesting a closed session during the budget process, which by law we have to have to discuss individual. Hey, is that correct, Zach? Was, is that correct?
That's correct. So under the council manager form of government, the only employee that, um, the board would be discussing performance for would be me, um, as the town manager. Um, and then in terms of the merit increases for all the other employees, that's, um, that'd be the responsibility of the town manager to account for those. Um, so I think the, uh, in, in terms of doing a closed session, um, my recommendation would, ideally, we don't want to do that over a, uh, electronic meeting. I think it's just going to be too complex. Um, so hopefully in June, um, there'll be an opportunity to do that, to have that discussion.
Thank you. Similar to last year's budget when, uh, uh, w- w- we did it, uh, we just basically asked everybody to leave the room. So that's, that's what I'm asking. Thank you.
No problem. All right. One note on the, um, on the public works building I wanted to mention is it, some considerations on doing an extension of that building. On one side of the building, I believe on the, uh, south side of that building, there is, the septic system is located right next to the building. And also the natural gas and electricity running at that point. And there's also a generator over there on that side. And then on the other side of that is where the access road comes in and there's an easement, I believe, in somewhere in that location. And there, that's also where that braid trailer is located. So it's just a, just a consideration for going either on the north or south side of that building. Um, just something to think about that it might be a little bit challenging. Um, and I'll get with Alex too, um, in the coming days. And what we're going to do is we've got a, we've reached out to probably twenty different, um, entities that do metal, metal buildings. And I'll do, uh, we'll do like a breakdown of what our best, um, offer is or what we found. So, um, to see if we're in that price range, what we already have in the, in the current budget. But, uh, yeah, we, we have a bunch of quotes. We just need to compile those and see where we're at. Um, and what's going to be the best value. All right. So I guess, um, if we want to go on to the, uh, and I know Brad Rich had asked in the comment section, so I'll address that real quick. The, uh, the anticipated revenues would be one million, six hundred, twenty-six thousand, three hundred, ninety-four. Um, anticipated expenditures would be one, one million, six hundred, twenty thousand, twenty-seven. Um, and that would be subject to change based off of, uh, these numbers up here, how we correct those. So, um, that's still a fluid number, but just wanted to address that since it was a, a comment there in the chat box. Um, so going over to the police department, um, I guess if we want to do a similar setup where if anybody has questions for the chief and, and the mayor can call on everybody, one by one to ask this question.
So Chief, you ready?
I'm ready. You copy me?
We can hear you. Go right ahead, sir.
Well, I'd like Zach to carry on. He's doing a good job. I'd like to listen to him present.
Well, if you like, I could just, if you like, I could just go through and see who's got questions to begin with. Would you rather just do that? Cause everybody's had plenty of time to look at this, so.
I, I would hope that everyone has, uh, a chance to look at the letter that I presented and some of the facts that we, the department, we put out on behalf of the department. I think that helps a lot with explaining the situation and what we need and where we're at.
Okay. Well, I'll start with Jeff, uh, for this one. And, uh, Jeff, go ahead. Any questions, comments? Got your mic on, Jeff.
All right. I guess going back for the, uh, training and education and certifications for departments, uh, I would say it's twenty-two hundred dollars. Is that even enough for these folks to go to school and get educated? I mean, in my past, I'd say that, that wouldn't be enough, but I don't know.
Well, I agree that I, I've tried to keep. Well, I agree that I, I've tried to keep everything as trim as possible, as streamlined as possible. Um, all training, uh, except for seminars, we'll go through the academy. So, that helps keep the cost of training down. I encourage the guys to sign up for all online training, which they are doing as that training becomes available. So, yes, it's very, a very nominal amount, but um, we're, we're able to get by with that and as long as we're utilizing the academy.
On item number 4855, small tools and equipment, what is that line item actually for?
Okay. Well, that would include uh, any type of extras that um, we might need as far as uh, there, there's been a, a number of expenditures for special tool we might need to work with. Um, I'm trying to see, and I can't think right off what all we have utilized. That might be something that uh, Sandy could answer, some of the items that we have spent on this year. Uh, I think it would also fall under the category that uh, we have also, and I believe I'm correct in saying this, that we've had to utilize some of that toward um, electronic purchases, uh, such as um, I believe we brought in another computer. Uh, and possibly we were using that for that purpose also.
Okay. What, what is your average, your average price per gallon on the fuel this year? And what figure was that?
That's something that I would have to calculate. Uh, I did not do a worksheet on the beginning of the year versus our current prices on fuel. Uh, so I cannot give you a, an honest answer on that.
What was last year's Zach? Do you know what that last year was calculated at?
I, I, I do not. Um, you're saying the cost of gas, correct?
Cost per gallon, the average cost per gallon that last year's figure was based upon and what this year's figure was based upon.
Uh, Zach may be able to help me a little more with that because uh, I have uh, utilized him for helping with uh, projecting the current costs versus, I know it was over $2 per gallon last year and what the anticipated cost found of vehicle uses this year, that's, that's what we based it on. And I've kind of relied pretty heavily on Zach for that.
Yeah, and typically what, typically what we're looking at is the um, what we've extended in the current fiscal year, but we also look back at, at previous years before that to see how we're trending. Um, just with, especially right now with the fluctuation in gas prices, um, and how low they are right now. I don't know how long they'll stay like that, it's kind of hard to forecast. But I did put up on the screen something that Chief had sent along, which was the starting um, mileage and, starting back in uh, in August on some of those vehicles and then the current mileage, um, just for information purposes about how many actual miles are being put in, put on those vehicles. I think Sandy should be sending, Sandy, did you get my text?
As you can notice, we're actually, there's more than 13,000 miles per year being placed on those vehicles. I have three that are over 70,000 and one's knocking on the door. So, as each day uh, goes by, that mileage increases. So, therefore the value, the resale value of those vehicles also, they do go down. So, just point out that fact.
Chief, uh, tell us what the um, shape of these vehicles at the end of this point overall?
Say that one more time.
What are the shape, uh, are these vehicles in good shape, moderate shape, poor shape, in your, in your opinion? What you've had experience with and the maintenance?
Mm-hmm. Vehicle six is moderate shape. Several of the vehicles with a higher mileage, if uh, if someone would like to take a ride in them, they're in moderate shape. They are not in the best of shape. Those vehicles are used and uh, on, particularly on NC 24, they're used uh, to go after speeding vehicles. So, they're under a totally different scenario as a vehicle that would be utilized, for instance, in MLI where you don't have, have to utilize the speed that you do to catch up to um, the speed that we have to go after out here on a five lane highway. So, there, uh, vehicle six, for instance, if you get in it now, you will not, it will not take you long to understand that there's an issue when that vehicle, uh, if you take off too fast in it, you, when you take turns, you will hear um, knocks under the steering. I've had it to a maintenance shop and they could not locate exactly what that is without putting big dollars into fixing it, but there would appear to be no safety issues. But those are issues for the vehicles. Uh, we are having a more, we're seeing more and more repairs and the, the cost of the repairs are getting substantially higher.
Zach, I have them in front of me. Do you want me to go scan them to you or do you need something in particular?
Just what you sent me earlier in the week, um, if you just forwarded to me and that way I can put it up on the screen if we want to be able to show the year to date on any of the specific uh, line items.
Okay. The public works has changed. Let me just go scan these to you because the ones earlier didn't have the updated public work. So, let me just scan this to you, okay?
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Chief, I have you on the uh, on the meeting here. In your opinion and your mechanic's opinion, are there any vehicles at this point in time that will need to be replaced within the next three to six months?
Well, if I had the first choice and the only one option, probably I would say vehicle six would, would, would be getting close to being replaced. Um, just due to the condition of it. Uh, and it is one of the higher mileage vehicles. Uh, so, if, I have not ridden, ridden in the other vehicles with the officers. So, I don't know uh, what condition they are all in, but I have ridden and driven vehicle six and if they're similar, uh, then uh, they're going to be getting closer and closer to, to having to be replaced or some major repairs possibly are going to have to be done in the, in the near future.
Okay, thank you.
Also, keep in mind that uh, in the, in the presentation, these vehicles ha- have very high idle times. So, these vehicles are not used in a, a normal situation and uh, they are, their lifespan is, is not as long as a normal vehicle lifespan would be.
Is that all you got Jeff? Thank you. Alright, Steve, comments, questions? Well, I would like to ask the two former police chiefs a direct question, but I think that'd probably be inappropriate. Uh, but I was, I was not expecting, but looking for a little bit more info from them since that's the career they have. Uh, Chief, uh, vehicle six, is that a 2014 Dodge Charger?
Uh, yes, sir, I believe it is.
Okay, uh, Zach, who is responsible for the 10-year capital improvement program? That I'm looking at right here. My trusty copy of my capital improvement program. Who, who is the author of that? You?
Yeah, I mean, I, I update it each year, um, and then the board adopts it.
This one right here, is that you?
I would assume so.
Okay. Reason I'm asking is uh, the next vehicle to be replaced in the police fleet, according to your capital improvement program, is the 2014 Dodge Charger, which is referred to as vehicle six, is that correct? Uh, and it's due to be replaced in fiscal year 2122, which is the next year. Which is why I think it's imperative that we put capital outlay in this current budget as it, it states in your improvement program for, for that police car. That being said, my question is, why is Morehead City able to get well over 100,000 miles on their cars with a huge town compared to what we have and, and we can't get 60,000 on one? I, I, that's my question Chief.
Okay, again, uh, you have to consider um, the area such as Morehead City, they're operating inside the city limits, uh, high traffic situations. Uh, whereas we have two major highways coming through town. Uh, it opens up a lot more opportunity for much higher speeds. Uh, and that does present an issue as far as wear and tear on a vehicle. Uh, it's uh, and I would love for any input at any time and point from the prior two chiefs. I welcome the input, uh, so they can uh, help reinforce that. If you're going after a 60 mile an hour vehicle, you can't do 60 and catch up to it if you have to turn around on it. So, that should hopefully explain the different scenario.
Well, I mean, you know, Morehead has, has highways too. I'm just using them as an example. Uh, I don't think any of us buys a car and don't, you know, I understand yours is a different animal because of the abuse they take, for lack of a better term. But uh, if you go by the capital improvement program which Zach Steffi, Town Manager, has laid out there, that car is due to be replaced next year. Uh, I think it's only appropriate for the, my fellow commissioners to look at this uh, capital or get a copy of this capital improvement program. Uh, getting back to the original budget I was handed where you were asking for eight officers, Chief. Uh, this is my third budget. If you recall your first year as a chief, Port Black asked you and former chief Don Miller in public if seven officers could do the job and both of you replied yes. Not trying to be uh, facetious or whatever the word is. What's changed now that seven officers can't do the job?
I think uh, one of, at least one of my replies was, we can get by with seven officers, but it does create a, a real issue uh, and, and um, for the department. It places a strain on all of the officers uh, because of, we do have vacations, we have sick leave, we do have training. We have, have part timers, but the problem is, is part timers are just that and they can't work when the full time needs them to work necessarily. And realizing we have to cover eight, 8,760 hours a year as a department and it's not just an eight hour day, which would only be 2,920 hours per year. It, it, it puts a strain on us and, and puts us in a position that uh, we really don't, I don't want to see my officers in or myself because it creates additional stress.
Here's, here's where I'm at, Chief. I think, I think that instead of asking for more officers, we need to take care of the ones we got. And from what I've read with your, your, your presentation that you sent out, uh, we're not doing that compared to other municipalities around here. So, uh, that's something I think Zach is working on if I'm not mistaken. But uh, you know, we've had this conversation, Bill, before. We're a small town. Uh, our police department, we, we love our police department. And, and as you know, you, you've never came to me and asked me for something I didn't help you with. Uh, I've been a, a huge fan of yours and your department, uh, but we have other needs in this town other than, I think, than growing our police department, uh, any more than it is now. But I, that being said, uh, Zach and I have had some conversation about this hybrid position. If that's something we can work out by using what we've allocated for your part-time officers, uh, I understand uh, Officer Bishop's certified, been on, been working now. Uh, if we can use him in the dual capacity as a hybrid position and Zach can work that out where uh, it doesn't involve a tax increase, I, I would be more than willing to listen to that. Uh, as I have told Zach that. But, but salary comparisons, it, it was embarrassing for me to read what you sent us, uh, as far as what we're paying our officers compared to other towns. That was a, it should be an embarrassment to, to us and I think uh, rather than hiring more people such as that eighth officer you asked for, we should concentrate on bringing our officers up to uh, to uh, competitive pay versus other towns and possibly uh, doing the half officer, if you will, that's what Zach hasn't listed there. Uh, but I'd like to see that all in, in a, in an updated budget Zach, uh, before I uh, want to vote yes on that, if you don't mind, uh.
Yeah, so the one, the budget I've got up on the screen right now, um, it reflects doing the seven and a half officers with it being a hybrid position. Um, so it's, with the cost being shared between police and the planning and inspections department. Um, and I can pull up the comparison to what it would be with eight. If you want me to pull that up.
I've got the uh, I've got the original budget, which was eight officers asked, uh, what you're looking at.
Yeah, yeah, so what y'all have shows eight and so this on the screen is showing seven and a half.
Chief, I'm gonna stay, I'm gonna go somewhere else that nobody else probably don't want to go, but you know me, I always say what's on my mind. Uh, Draco, we, we were, when we approved Draco, which, which at that time I, I thought was a, a, a good thing, we were more or less told that his upkeep and training and all was going to be paid for by donations. And I'm seeing a $6,000 line item request here for uh, K9 program cost. That's not what we were told. I talked to other people that were in on it and they remembered the same thing I did. What's going on with that? And also the fact that we, now we're told it'd be another year before his training is complete and they want to give us a companion animal, which we will have to keep up. So, can you explain a little bit of that?
Uh, that line item could be reduced. This was uh, probably a safety net, but this training uh, so far has paid for, it has been paid by donations. We're just at the point of now of it possibly costing us uh, some out-of-pocket expenses. But that, that should go significantly down because uh, one thing that uh, we did realize, the medical is, service is, is uh, free of charge. But any items that are utilized for the K9, uh, the, they are sold to us at cost. And I think that probably the presentation that you, you got recently from the trainer, uh, he's training uh, Draco on a $200 per month, uh, and a $200 per month cost significantly less than what he would charge anyone else. So, that line item could be adjusted. I will need to have some further discussion with the trainer. Uh, all of the main. I need to have some further discussion with the trainer. Uh, all of the major expenses, uh, should be out of the way now. The, uh, four thousand plus dollar cage was donated, uh, so for the vehicle. So I could see that item possibly having a, an adjustment.
Yeah, I, I would think it'd be a serious adjustment, uh, Chief, because we were sold that, we were sold on the, on the idea that he, that he was going to be basically self-sustainable. What's the deal on inheriting another dog? Uh, to keep up?
Well, it, it's not for the, not for the, the, the town to take responsibility of. Uh, it, it was just going to be a backup dog. If anything happened to Draco, that, that dog could take over. This is, uh, would be no expense to the town. This is totally a free service of the trainer, uh, just due to the relationship that we have with him.
Well, it sounds like you've got a good relationship with him, but I'm just surprised at the six thousand dollars you're asking for here, uh.
Well, it was based on this, this year's budget, it was based on that, and I think Zach has thrown it up there so you can see what the cost was. That did include, uh, Zach, that did include the, uh, cage donation installation, correct?
Yeah, so what I, what I'm showing on the screen right now is how much we've received in donations for the K nine program in this fiscal year. So we've gotten in five thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and forty-seven cents. So I think the six thousand dollar projection is based off of how much we've received in the income, um, in terms of the donations, but let me check down to, uh, down to police. And that cost, um, like Chief was saying, does include the, the cage and some of the other startup expenses, um, which won't be reoccurring each year.
Okay, I'm assuming, uh, that we as a board are going to the, the next budget meeting or two, we're going to vote on whether to keep this dog, whether to, to put a capital outlay in, uh, uh, whether to go with leasing and things like that, is that correct? So we're just stating more what we think, uh.
Yeah, just to give a update, so this is in the expense, the expense for the police department. So we're looking at, so far, year-to-date, we've expended five thousand eight hundred four dollars and sixteen cents. Um, and so we, we brought in more donations than we've expended, at least at the time of this report, and that might change by the end of the fiscal year, um, which is what Chief was referencing earlier, but I think that six thousand could probably be lowered a little bit because we won't have the expenses like a cage and other things. That's not a reoccurring annual expense. That was a one-time expense to get the vehicle outfitted, or at least until that vehicle needs to be replaced, but at least, um, that should last us for several years with that vehicle, um, so just to provide that update.
Zach, I just sent you a breakdown of the K nine officer expenses so you can see exactly what was spent in that five thousand eight hundred and four dollars.
Okay, there we go. I've got that on the screen now.
Okay.
So a lot of these expenses, the, the leash, let's say the leash, um, harness, uh, the containment area, which was the three thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars and ninety-two cents, that was the cage and the automated features and the patrol car that if the dog gets to a certain, if it gets to a certain heat level, then it automatically opens the window and starts the fan, which is a requirement. Um, that was probably the biggest expense we've seen thus far, which was at three thousand eight hundred fifty-six. And that's a one-time, at least one time in several years expense, and ideally that cage should be able to be moved hopefully from one vehicle to another, um, when it comes time to replace that vehicle, but.
You have to stay with a Dodge Charger. We had the conversation. Uh, Chief, I got one more question. Zach, you're taking notes of my concerns and questions about the police program, is that correct? So we can just.
And not to interrupt.
Uh, Chief, I got one more question. Uh, honestly, uh, at this point in time with it, with this, uh, K nine, are you have a second, are you have a second thoughts about it?
No, sir. Uh, when this dog goes into service, you're going to see him in action, and uh, people are going to start hearing about Cape Carteret on the news. Uh, it's going to open up doors galore for us, uh. Or there'll be a, a lot more drug interventions on traffic stops. Uh, he will pay off. What is paying off right now is the community policing. The public's response to Draco is phenomenal, and it's opened up many new avenues and doors for us to interact with the public from juveniles all the way up to, uh, seniors. So I've been very pleased with the response, uh, to integrating, uh, Draco into the program and, and with the department.
Okay. Zach, I got one more question for you, buddy. Uh, these merit raises that you're asking for along with the COLA, does that make headway into getting our police officers up to level playing field with other towns, uh?
Yeah, yes, I believe that with what we've requested in terms of the merit increases and the COLA for the police department, it'll put our officers at a comparable level, um, and obviously, and that's something that Chief and I looked at when we formulated those recommended, uh, increases. It's, it won't apply to all of the officers. Um, the merit increases won't apply to all, um, because some are, are close to where we'd like them to be, but there's some that are significantly below, and that, that gets those folks that are significantly below that level um, to where they need to be. Uh, we have some really great officers that are, are really underpaid, that we need to do everything we can to retain them, um, because when you get talent like that, you really want to retain and continue to, to shape that talent and keep them on board, because that's the future leadership in the department one day, you know? Um, so if we can keep them on board and keep them on our team, I think that's really important that we're taking those steps to make sure we do that. We don't want to be a training ground for folks that they stay for a year or two and they go on down the road because all of our training expenses and everything are stunting them, and then we start right back at, at square one, so, um, those good officers we have, we definitely want to make sure that we're keeping them where we need to be, um, to be competitive with the other agencies. And that's reflected in the, uh, proposal, um, in the proposed budget.
All right, I'm so sorry, but I've just, I've just looked at my list and I got one more question. Uh, Chief, Chief, you or Zach, one, feel free to, one of you answer this question for me. Uh, maybe, uh, Commissioner Waters may want to chime in too. Do you, either you feel that it's our obligation as a town to continue furnishing an SRO for a county school? Or do you think the county? I know we get donations, but at the same time, it, it doesn't cover everything. Uh, it, it, do, do you think that, uh, and I've had some discussions that I don't want to say anything, but do you think another municipality, we have no more right, I guess, what I'm trying to say, to put, uh, at that school than any other municipality? In my mind, this is county school in this county. Is that, what, what's your thought process on that?
I absolutely think that we should have an SRO in the school, just as all the, the other municipalities have their own SROs. Uh, Morehead has all of their schools equipped, now their own SRO. Uh, the county now has SROs, then the sheriff has those in the county jurisdiction. Uh, it is again, um, the, in the public's best interest to maintain one, it is, uh, it's actually expected now from the community, um, to remove an SRO from the school would be a, a black eye for the town, uh, and, uh.
Chief, I'm, Chief, let me, let me interrupt you, Chief. I'm not, I'm not, uh, I'm not saying we don't, don't need one. I'm saying, do we, is it our responsibility to furnish one for a county school? Why cannot another municipality such as Emerald Isle uh, furnish one on a rotational basis? Would that be, would that concept make any sense?
In my opinion, no. Yeah, in my opinion. You, you just don't bring another municipality into this municipality, uh, to fulfill a position that would logically be filled by our town and our department.
What would you say, what would you say if a, if a county deputy sheriff, uh, was in there? I mean, it's a county campus, not a Cape Carteret city school campus.
Well, it's really ultimately, it's not my choice, but my recommendation is.
Just ask you what you recommend. Uh, that's all I'm doing. I'm, I'm not, I'm not, uh.
I'm not being detentive, but it's my recommendation to leave one of our officers there. It's just, it's just, it just follows logic, uh, the way I see it.
Okay, that, I, I'm not advocating disbanding the SRO program. I think it's great. Uh, I'm, I'm just, I just had those questions I felt like I needed to ask. Thank you. I'm done.
One last thing, uh, one last thing, Commissioner Martin. Talking about vehicle maintenance, I'm not sure if, uh, Chief Miller might be able to allude to that fact because his son still, uh, he's, uh, an officer with Morehead City, but I have had more than one person say that you're talking about their vehicles and the mileage they get. But I think they have their own maintenance facility, but my understanding is that their vehicles stay in the maintenance facility more than are on the highway sometimes, just because it's all.
Their, their maintenance is provided by Curtis Chevrolet, uh, which is where I do my business, and I've had that conversation uh, with some of the people that maintain those, and, and, and with Rian. So, anyway, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Not all of their maintenance is done at Curtis Chevrolet. They, they have a, Morehead City has a vehicle garage maintenance where they get their normal maintenance done. If the vehicle's under warranty and it's a Chevrolet, they're going to go to Curtis Chevrolet, unless things have changed since I was there.
Uh, thanks, though, Don. They, uh, I, I'm not, didn't say Morehead didn't have a, a garage. I do know that every time I go to Curtis Chevrolet, there's a Morehead City police car there, and it's got age on it too. Uh, and they do maintain them, and I've, I've looked at the mileage, it's well north of a hundred and twenty thousand on some of them. Yeah, thanks.
I would just like to clarify, if I could, as far as the K nine expenses that are on the screen here, that five thousand eight hundred and four dollars, we have gotten enough contributions to cover all of that except for two hundred and forty-three dollars. So the town has only paid two hundred and forty-three dollars, and we currently have a contribution right now that is in town hall, but we can't, we have not been able to deposit it yet. It's a whole lot of coins and we have to roll it up, or so I'm not sure exactly how much that is, but I would venture to say that we have about, you know, probably would only end up almost covering that. So I, I just wanted to make sure everybody realized that at this point, and I don't know what next year will hold, but at this point, the K nine has almost covered himself. Although he did almost want to eat my fingers yesterday, but I still will cover him, so.
All right, well, Don, your turn.
Okay, I wanted to, I want to start off with as far as the number of officers, and I did say, we had a discussion a couple of years ago when we were discussing seven or eight officers, and I did say the department could get by with seven as long as the chief has got the flexibility to pull that SRO out whenever he needs to use him. Because in my five years here, I had seven officers, one of them being an SRO, but I pulled that SRO out, SRO out of the school quite frequently when I needed him. I said, if we want to have a dedicated SRO in that school that's not going to be getting jerked out, you know, every week or whatever, then, then I thought we needed the extra officer. But that, that, that was my comment. We talked about it a couple of years ago. I do have a question with the, the, uh, seven-point five. Yeah, I understand the concept of what we're doing, but is he going to be considered? Is he, is he a full-time employee with benefits, or is he a part-time employee, both under code and police department?
Yeah, so the way that, the way that I designed that hybrid position to be would be, he would be a full-time employee with benefits, and we split the cost of the benefits between planning and police, split the salary cost between planning and police. And the good thing is that with any revenues that are generated in the planning and inspections department, by law, those, that revenue that comes in for permits and other fees has to go back into that department in planning inspections. So a good amount of his salary would be covered by that revenue that we're generating, because we're issuing more permits than we ever have before. We've seen a significant increase, um, in part due to a lot of the stuff after the storm, but uh, even just in general, we're getting a lot of permits, um, you know, a lot of people are, are doing what they're supposed to be doing and coming in and getting permits, which, uh, is a reflection, I think, of having somebody in that position, um, that people know they have to come and get zoning permits before they do work now. So that has definitely been a benefit, but at least a portion of that salary, um, is covered by that revenue, and it has to be, that revenue has to stay within that department. It can't be expended elsewhere, so it's a, it's kind of a good, you know, additional thing, and having him in a dual role, um, is, I think, a really good setup because, you know, if he's working in police department one day and he sees something that is, he sees some work going on without a permit, he can, he can put a stop-work order on it and go back to his work, you know, for the police department. Um, it just, it lends itself to getting the kind of coverage we need in town, um, because a lot of people, you know, and the other thing is, he'll be working weekend shift, and, you know, a lot of people try to do things and sneak things in on the weekend. This is a good way to address that issue that we have them there on the weekend, and, uh, we'll be able to kind of address some of that weekend work that tends to go on and, and try to prevent some of that, because that's when a lot of these, uh, non-permitted structures and projects occur, so I think there's a, a dual benefit there.
All right, Zach and I had a, a couple of questions about the, the K nine from when we discussed it last year. Is Island Veterinary Service, are they providing all vet coverage?
At the, at the time, at the time that we presented it, we thought, excuse me, that they would cover all expenses. They donate all labor, and, excuse me just a minute. They donate all, all of their services. However, any items that are used, like vaccines or supplies, they are, we are charged at their cost. They do no markup on it, so that is the difference.
We're, we're paying for the meds, but they're, they're giving us the service for free, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, then, what about food? I thought I remembered hearing something about PetSense and, or was that a one-time thing? Was PetSense not supplying food?
PetSense, PetSense.
Maybe I'm wrong.
PetSense donates all food.
They do, they do donate all, okay.
Yes, sir. They also keep donations jar there. Uh, we just took, took in, I think, uh, just under a hundred dollars recently for donations, so people continue to donate.
And then just to add in there, Muddigan, um, and Emerald Isle provides the, uh, or Swansworth provides the grooming services, um, so that's another donated community service, which is nice.
Okay, the, the other thing I had, and it's, it's already been brought up, is this, I, I have a, a big problem with no money whatsoever going into capital outlay for vehicles. I mean, we've been discussing vehicles and the shape they're in, and you know, we've got the plan, and you know these vehicles are getting their mileage, getting wear and tear, are going to have to be replaced, and I just, I feel like every year with police, with the police department, you, you know you're going to be cycling through those vehicles. You, you know what kind of condition that they're going to end up being in. I just think we should, every year, we should be putting some kind of money forward to when we have to buy that next vehicle, whether, you know, and I realize. Whether, you know, and I realize we're gonna talk about whether we're gonna go with leasing or buying or whatever, but however we do it, I just, I have a problem with that. I feel like we should be putting money toward, toward vehicles and capital outlay every year.
Yeah, I would, I'd agree with that statement completely. I mean, we definitely need to be putting money way towards our, if we're not gonna go the enterprise route, then we need to be putting money aside in the capital improvement program. But until we know which direction we're going, it's hard to put a number with that. But based on the capital improvement program, if we're following that schedule, then in this year, we're supposed to be putting aside forty-six thousand two hundred eighty-four dollars in the CIP for the police department and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-eight in the public works department. So, that's a big, until we know what route we're going, so you look, if you look at the numbers that Enterprise presented earlier, that's where potentially if we did, you know, three vehicles, two police cars and one public works vehicle, that cost would come in below forty-six thousand plus twenty-nine thousand, right? I mean, we'd be looking at somewhere in the twenty, thirty thousand dollar range as opposed to something in the seventy thousand dollar range if we did the CIP route. That's where that variability and uncertainty of which route we're gonna go, um, is why I didn't wanna put it one way or another. I wanted us to discuss it. That's why this is just a preliminary kinda swing at the budget. But, um, that's where I think the value in that enterprise program is, you look at what our annual cost would be and is if we could get it an annual cost at doing, you know, if we could do, uh, three vehicles in the first year and offset having to pay, put seventy thousand dollars aside in the capital improvement program, I think there's a lot of value to that. We're getting new vehicles, getting them right up front and we're not having to put as much away in a capital program. So, that's just, that's just kinda the thought process there. But if we don't go that route, we certainly need to make sure we're making that contribution to the capital improvement program like we're, like we projected in our schedule.
I think that's all I have for right now.
Okay, Don, thanks. Uh, Mike, still there? Your turn.
Yes, I am. Um, okay. Police Department, um, two years ago, we went from eight down to seven police officers. Uh, the chief at the time, Don Miller, uh, agreed with that. And here we are, turning right around two years later and, and going back up. I have, um, I'm just not supportive of an eighth officer. You're talking, uh, a town, uh, uh, very small, mile and a half by a mile, uh, with, uh, seven full-time police officers. Neither of Cedar Point, Pelletier, or Vogue have them and you never see a Newport police officer on that section of twenty-four between here and Morehead City. I just think it's an unnecessary expense. We spent thirty-six percent of, uh, our budget on a police department and we are a town with not rapidly grown revenues like other shore towns and, uh, we have, we put things off to, uh, fund a police department. So, I have no, I'm not support, supportive of adding another, another officer. And that would take out of the budget, um, if you take Zach, items, uh, forty-seven, ten through forty-seventy-one, eight, you take, uh, twelve and a half percent of that out plus the salaries and fees, we're talking the sizable, uh, we're talking almost sixty thousand dollars. And that doesn't include the car. Um, regard to Draco, uh, I was the only one, uh, I'm probably not gonna change this thing, but our county has, uh, three canines. And, uh, this is a service that, uh, is, the county has a significant advantage to plot, to use this, these canines wherever they need within the county. For us to separately have a, uh, our own dog and then another dog as a backup, uh, uh, I think it's, it's unnecessary and this, this expense will go on forever and then ten years from now, five years from now, when that dog's out of service, we'll be going through the training of another one. So, that line item, uh, I'm not supportive, but I was in the minority on that. Um, with regard, uh, to vehicles, uh, yes, we have to wait till we decide the enterprise fund or whether we're gonna fund them our, ourselves. But, uh, and, and industry and every other place that I've been, people run vehicles, whether they're trucks, cars or big pieces of equipment, they run them the equivalent of a hundred and fifty, in some cases where their diesel engines, two hundred and fifty thousand miles. And we're sitting around turning these things over at, uh, at seventy-five. I, I think that is just really, um, not taking the advantage that we have of today's cars. The quality of those cars will easily run with good maintenance, a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand miles. So, with regard to the cars, and I'll, we defer that to when we, we discuss it after we get through this, um, this leasing issue. Uh, we should be putting some aside and running those things, not seventy-five and eighty thousand miles, but more like a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand miles and taking care of them. Um, with, uh, regard to the SRO, um, it's been here. This town has paid the lion's share of that police officer for, uh, probably ten years now, maybe, maybe even more than that. It's, it's, it's close to that. And, uh, it's, is a county school and clearly a county expense and the other towns sharing that school should pay an equal portion. Now, we've just recently started getting some money from these other schools, but you look at this SRO, uh, there's, uh, the SRO is in the school fourteen hundred and forty hours a year and there's two thousand and eighty, so the town has a, uh, quote, eighth police officer, fourteen hundred and, or six hundred and forty hours a year. So, uh, which is, good part of it's in the summertime, but it's also during the weeks we have vacation. Okay, um, trying to go as fast as I can, cause this thing is really dragging out. Uh, uh, I'm very supportive of a hybrid officer. If you will look at the ordinances, in the early days, uh, the police department was, uh, did a lot of the zoning citations and things like that. And I think that can work very well in it, but not as an eighth officer. It would have to be within the seven that we have now and it spends maybe two, two, two days a week on, uh, a zoning and, uh, code enforcement and the rest of the time is a police officer. Um, let's see what else I got. A vehicle fuel, uh, well, I won't go into that. That, that may be a high price with the, uh, with the, with the decrease that we've had. So, Zach, you can take a look at that. Uh, I'm not gonna question if we need it, but that would be roughly, if we don't add that police officer, that needs to come down by, uh, one seventh or one eighth. Let's see. That's basically it.
All right, thanks, Mike. Uh, Jim?
Uh, yeah. Okay. Uh, I am not at all crazy about an idea of a split employee with two separate, uh, processes. Uh, it just doesn't, I, I can see all kinds of management control problems. Uh, you can say that, oh, well, he's gonna be my employee, he's gonna be my employee these days, my employee these days, but if you've already stated, you're gonna have him doing both jobs simultaneously. I just don't think that's very sensible. Um, I, uh, and, and as far as a canine, uh, that report I read, it suggested that there's gonna be something like, uh, ten to twenty thousand dollars additional to the end of the year before he finally gets to be a fully qualified, uh, dog at age eighteen months to two years. Is that, is that everything right?
Is that a question? Is there any way that his phone can be made where we can hear him, understand him?
Oh.
Commissioner Nellis, if you can turn your volume down on your computer for your, or turn your mic off on the computer and just use the phone, that might help.
That's what I'm doing.
So, on the, on the computer in the upper right-hand corner of the screen, there should be a microphone icon. If you click that microphone and mute it, I think that might eliminate the feedback.
There's no microphone on.
Hold on, we'll do, we'll get. Maybe if he mutes his phone and uses computer mic, does he?
You're suggesting. There's speakers. Um.
Yeah, I think he tried to mute his phone before, cause he wasn't able to hear us maybe over the computer.
Okay.
See the, no, I think the calls are merged because, uh, well, let me see. Try something real quick. All right, try to say something now.
All right, can you hear me now?
Okay, so that fixed that.
Okay, now can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you a little better. Put it right up to your mouth now. Or what, or which one are you using, the phone or the TV?
I think I'm using.
Talk.
I think I'm using the, uh, computer.
Uh, it's much better now.
All right. Where was I? Uh, so I started off on a rant about the, uh, uh, part-time, or the, uh, split employee saying I, I don't think it's a great idea. Uh, I think you're, you end up with command and control problems because you've got two people saying they, they, uh, have control over the same individual. Uh, it's one thing if, if you say, okay, two days a week, he's gonna be mine and, and five days a week, he's gonna be yours, but you've already stated that you're gonna have, uh, have them overlapping. He's doing one job and suddenly he switches, uh, to the other job and then back and forth. Who's he working for at that point? Is he working for both of you or one, one of you? I, I, I think it's a, a management problem that, uh, that doesn't need to happen. The other question I had had to do with, with, uh, a canine. In the reports that, that we got, uh, it suggested that, uh, we're gonna have expenditure, damn, that thing's off again. Okay, am I on or not?
You're on.
Yes.
What was the last thing?
Still there?
Because it's been suddenly went out. All right, anyway.
So, I'm manually, I'm manually muting.
The report that we got on the dog said that there's gonna be something like ten to twenty thousand dollars additional training expenses before he became fully qualif, before he became fully qualified at eighteen months to, uh, two years. Is that right?
That's incorrect. Uh, most of the training costs, uh, is in the past now. There will be a few more months of training cost at two hundred per month and then his, then there will be annual certification, which I cannot give you that exact figure. It would be based on who does that. But most of the cost is behind us at this time and point.
That's, that's good, okay. Uh, and I, I would be more in favor of, uh, across-the-board raises for seven than adding an eighth full-time employee or an eighth officer. And that's all I got.
What, what the eighth officer does.
Thank you, Jim. Any more comments?
Yeah, I have commented on, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Chief.
Well, what the eighth officer does is relieve a lot of, of stress on all of the officers. And, uh, if you've noticed the, um, calls for service that I've put out over the last five years, I mean, two thousand and fifteen, twenty-four hundred and eighty-three calls registered through, uh, communications. Last year, seven thousand, in two thousand, I'm sorry, in two thousand and eighteen. Two thousand and nineteen, it jumped to eighty-eight hundred and five, uh, calls for service. So, the officers are out and they're doing, they have more calls for service. Um, they, um, they're working harder than ever, uh, and they're out doing their jobs, but there's, there's still times when they need breaks, vacations, training, they get sick. And so, when you have, uh, eight thousand seven hundred and sixty hours to cover in a year, it puts, uh, it puts a lot more stress on the department. Um, and there's even times that I have filled in as an officer, full shift, because I had no one to come out and work the road. So, that's, uh, one point. Uh, as far as, uh, one of the other responses to the canine, we have, every time that we've asked for a canine, uh, most of the time that they were indisposed. We did not get a canine to our scene. The one time that I did see a canine show up, it had taken over thirty minutes. By that time, we had to release the person because we were, uh, outside the limitations that we could detain someone. So, uh, those are the issues that we face as far as having, yes, there are canine units in the county, but they're not always available.
Well, Chief, Chief, that being said, uh, one of my biggest fears was, uh, other towns taking advantage of our canine and, uh, in a mutual aid call, if you will, or whatever y'all guys call it. And, and of course, our officer, our canine officer has to go along with the dog and, uh, and I think, uh, former Chief Miller and I had that conversation recently, I think, uh, to something to that effect. And, uh, I, I'm not a police officer, don't claim to know everything about it, but, uh, you know, I, I can certainly see other towns using our dog, uh, if county's not, just like you said, not available.
Well, that would be, if that did happen, would be very, very, very seldom. The only time we had to utilize another, uh, uh, department was when we thought we might have the individual in the woodline east of White Oak. And, uh, Jacksonville came up with their search canine to verify that that person was not out there. But that's been the only instance that we've had. And usually it's county going to a municipality, uh, rather than a municipality going to another municipality or to the county.
And as far as your.
Of course, the dog is only gonna be available, Sergeant Walden's available. He's off duty, no dog.
I, I could, if he's speaking to me, uh, I'm resetting my internet and he, I cannot understand him again.
So, I'm, I'm manually muting Commissioner Nellis so that it doesn't echo. So, Commissioner Nellis, if you believe it muted, how it shows up with that red icon and then it doesn't echo for us on our end. See, we can hear you right now. Um, since it's, yeah, yeah, so you're good. It, it comes in normally like, like it is right now.
Oh, okay. Well, he's, he's resetting his thing, but what I was saying was that, uh, we only have, we only have the dog when Sergeant Walden's on duty. Uh, one, you know, so when he's not, there will be no, no dog.
If we had a major, uh, stop, Sergeant Walden would be called out for that stop. If we suspect that this is a, um, for lack of better terms, a motherload possibly in that vehicle, then yes, he would be called out.
Chief, uh, you alluded to the fact earlier about the luxury of having that eighth officer, uh, to fill in for, as needed or whatever. I thought we'd had that conversation. That's why we, uh, uh, put more money in your part-time officer line to where you had the luxury of, uh, having that part-time officer at your disposal, if you could get one. Uh, for, for those times, uh. Uh, for, for those times, uh.
Okay, uh, again. I would say eighty to ninety percent of the time when we need one of those part-time officers, they are not available because they're working full-time positions elsewhere. Or other jobs. I have one part-time that when he's off duty is willing to work, uh, he's full-time with Beaufort. Uh, and so in most cases, uh, again, is, uh. As town manager alluded to earlier, uh, we've had to utilize some of our other full-time officers, which throws us. Much deeper into the overtime wages and we could prevent that even with, if we had a half of an officer. That would help, uh, eliminate some of those issues because we would have some flexibility with scheduling.
Yeah, just to give, maybe expand on that a little bit, um, to address the control about the command and control, uh, situation in the hybrid position. Um, currently, that's how it is, it is functioning with, um, we're using part-time. And part-time in the, uh, planning inspections department. So it is, it's currently functioning like a hybrid position. But we just have to stay below the, the hours total, um, which really isn't fair to that individual who's in that position to. Being kept just below the threshold of being full-time and not getting benefits. Um, and to be able to retain that individual, which I think is, is very well suited for that position. Um, I think it's important that we get him to a level that. He's able to get benefits, um, just like the other employees. So that's sort of the thought process, but, um, on the screen right now, I've got. I've got the budget as eight, eight full-time officers. That's what I'm showing, the three hundred twenty-three thousand, seven forty-six for the, uh. Regular salaries, eight thousand for overtime, sixteen thousand for part-time. And if we go over to doing a hybrid position, the budget goes down to three hundred thirteen thousand, five hundred nine. With that hybrid position, um, the overtime goes down to six thousand dollars and the part-time goes down to ten thousand. And the reason behind that is because if we've got a reliable part-time officer that we know we can fill in the gaps with. Which in this hybrid position, we would know that we could fill in gaps and we've already been able to do that. Um, we'd be able to save significantly on overtime by being able to utilize a part-timer that we know. Is essentially available for work when we need that individual. Right now, like Chief said, it, it's really hit or miss. It's eighty to ninety percent of the time, they're not available. Um, you know, we set standards of a minimum number of times they need to work per month for those part-timers because. There were some folks that were just not working for several months on this or several weeks on that. That doesn't do us any benefit. We're just. Kind of ma- holding a cert and training and not, not getting any benefit out of it. The chief has tightened up on that to try to get more work out of folks, but. When they have a full-time job somewhere else, if not, we can't expect that they're going to drop what they're doing at their full-time job and come and work for us. It's just not feasible, um, unfortunately. So the hybrid model would allow us to save a lot of money. And have a position that we know that we can call on essentially a part-timer that can work and fill in those gaps and that chief can schedule. That part-timer as needed, um, which is what we're doing right now, but we're just staying right below that threshold. Of being full-time because otherwise we'd have to have benefits in the budget, um, and that's something, that's, that's what we're proposing. If we get a hybrid route, adding those benefits on there. Because otherwise, I don't think we'll be able to retain that individual in that position because. Uh, I don't think that would be realistic to say, work, you know, just continue to work just below the threshold and don't get. You know, benefits that other full-time employees are entitled to. So, um, that's sort of the thought process behind it.
I understand.
What you're actually saying is that he's going to be your employee while available for the police department whenever needed.
So it would be, he would be working a regular set of shifts in the police department, alternating based off of the gaps in the schedule. Um, so it's, it's in a hybrid capacity. Um, but we've been doing this now for several weeks and, and I think it's. You know, I can see in some places in larger towns where there's more, um, division, I guess, between departments. I can see where it could be challenging maybe to have a hybrid position. But in a small town, when, you know, we're doing everything we can to keep the budget at the lowest level, but still offer the maximum number of services we can. Um, you know, I think it's unique in that, I mean, the relationship between the chief and I is that, you know, we, I don't foresee any issues in terms of the command and control. And with that individual in that position, I don't foresee any issues, but I could definitely see in a larger town. Uh, where that would be a challenge to, to do a hybrid position, but I mean, we're a small staff and people already have positions that, and duties that overlap. Um, and that's kind of just the nature of working in a small town.
What you're saying though, Zach, is, uh, is half true. Uh, it's, it may save the police department some money, but you're, you, you put another part of it in planning. And inspections, which you doubled your, if we go along with this seven and a half, you're doubling your plan inspection bu- uh, budget request. Thirty-one thousand, three hundred and four dollars. Okay, uh. So i- i- the bottom line is not going to change. I want to get this straight here. So. Chief McKinney and Zach are withdrawing their request for the eighth officer and trying, and promoting a seven and a half hybrid position. Not going, is that what you're doing, Zach?
I'm not, I'm not withdrawing any requests. I'm still, best case scenario, I think that the police department needs eight officers. Don't get me wrong on that. I, I.
What, what budget are we going by? The, the one you've got here with the seven and a half or the eight? That, that's what we need to know.
So what's in front of y'all right now that y'all have that was going back in March? I was just providing you the example as a comparison. If you go off of this budget right here with eight full-time officers. And that's what my recommendation, that's what my recommendation would be based off of their needs. However. If we're not able to do that, I think we need to do something enough to compromise to get them more reliable coverage. And I think it's a good step in the right direction. Um, it's definitely not a complete fix, but it's, uh. It's substantially better than what we're encountering currently.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I interject here?
Go ahead, Mike.
Um, the seven, this is all new to us because all we had was the eight, okay? And as I was very clear that I'm not supportive of adding another officer. If we go seven and a half, the plannings and inspections department should go to zero. You know, with, with the code enforcement then handled by the police department. And to answer Jim Nailis' question, they both report to the same man. So I don't know how that can be any kind of a conflict. That man being yourself, Zach.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it all, it all falls within, within my purview. So I don't foresee any issues on that side of it, but, um. In terms of zeroing out the, in terms of zeroing out the planning and inspection. Budget, I don't know where we would make up the other half of that salary then.
Then, then what we're saying is, you know, which, we're not at seven officers. You're adding enough money in there to, uh. To fund the portion of the inspections that's going to be done by that police officer. It's not, what, what, what I would. Be very supportive of is seven officers and handling the zoning function. Zoning and code enforcement function. And what you're proposing that we haven't seen before is seven and a half and, uh, I need to see those numbers and talk it at the next meeting.
Okay, yeah, I can definitely send out the, the breakdown of the specifics of how that's broken out. But also keep in mind that any revenue that's generated in that planning and inspections department. Needs to go back into that department. So that's why balancing the salary in a sense that's between the two departments makes sense. Because it's extending the revenue generated off of permit fees, it's going back towards the salary like it's supposed to within that department.
Well, th- that's fine. Uh, no issue with that. The, the point is that here, we're looking at the March numbers and you got, we got something else here. We haven't seen it. I want to see the whole thing laid out where I can put the two side by side and see the final effect on the total budget. Not only this, but with the other changes that have been suggested, uh, by different, uh, different commissioners.
Yeah, we could definitely have.
Right, right.
Yeah, we, I was just going to say, we could definitely have all that put together on there. And I already have the, I have a breakout with the hybrid, um, which I can send out as well. Um, and then I guess the other thing is. I might do like four columns in addition to these two that show. If we stick to the capital improvement program versus if we go with the enterprise and that way you can compare that as well, um. And I think that'll be helpful to just sort of summarize and everything.
Can you supply that in paper form and have, and, uh, have a police officer drop it on my porch for me, please?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Jeff, you have a comment?
I have several things I'd like to, uh, like send upon. Uh, and this, this question is to the chief, uh, chief, is it still in place with the judicial system? That any monies and tax monies that is the, that is confiscated, uh, through the police department. Uh, some of those monies is contributed back to the town? In other words, if the dog confiscated, uh, came across some drugs that were seized, the monies that were seized. Is it not true that some of those monies would be given back to the town?
That's correct. Some of those monies would be allocated back to the town if there was, uh, a vehicle seizure. Uh, I believe that that also could be utilized, uh, and, um, for the town for the purpose of. Uh, being able to auction it off in the future.
Okay. Uh, I do know that when the canine unit was discussed right upon, that was outside of mine and, uh, Jim Nailis' election year. But, uh, and I foresaw that with having a canine unit, there'd be future costs down the road. I have some concerns with that as well, as if something happened with, uh, Officer Walden, who would take over the canine unit. Would that be more money spent? Paying that officer with that dog. So I do see some issues there that could come up in the future with canine and something to, uh, be looked at as well. Also, Chief, uh, another question for you, uh. I know you spoke about, uh, about some community policing programs for the town, which would help build relationships. Between the citizens and the, and the police department with top of community policing programs where that. Also extend your officers', um, hours, um, outside in the overtime. That is spent in court, vacation, sick leave, where officers have to come in and deal with them as well.
Okay, can you just rephrase that in one sentence?
I understand that you wanted to have some community fixing programs which would enhance the relationship between the town citizens and the police department. With that being said, it would also incur officers being involved more outside than just the enforcement side. Along with the community policing side. So it would take more officer time, which can incur overtime, correct?
But it, it could, uh, unless we utilize a, another officer, uh, to, for that coverage. I think that it would, uh, help, um, keep us or prevent the department from getting more overtime. Now, all officers, their court dates already add some overtime to their schedule, okay? Um, but yes, it would help if we had an additional officer to prevent some of the extra duties, like you said, parades. Uh, uh, the extracurricular, uh, community policing programs that we have, I think it would help keep the cost down.
If it's, if you're able to see that eighth officer with a part-time officer. See that question. I do know that any, any way we go with this, uh, even an officer, half officer or even. Another full-time officer, there will be challenges either way you look at it. I don't care how you look at it, there will going to be challenges. Uh, whether it's, uh, lack of manpower, lack of monies, lack of personnel. But I will say this, sir, my question is, is if, if you never get that eighth officer. Where a half, with a, with a part-time officer be able to assist you in some of the, um. Ideas and, 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 uh, directions that you want to take in the future.
The answer to that is yes, would be able to assist. Uh, I do have, uh, there is a downside. If we can only add half an officer. Uh, here at the PD and the proposal is to utilize the same officer, uh, for code enforcement. We're not going to be able to retain a part-time officer because they have, they have to support their families, they have to support themselves. The problem that all departments are having is they can't retain part-time officers, uh, on a regular schedule. Because they cannot support themselves or their families. So that will be an issue, uh, if we think that we can keep. Uh, a, a part-time officer on a regular schedule, that's just, that's not going to be practical.
Uh, one more question on the, uh, overtime. Have you already extended past the overtime monies for this fiscal year?
You are, you're, I'm met up with your speaker. I'm, I'm having trouble hearing you.
I ask you, uh, have you already extended past the overtime expenditure for the fiscal year so far?
Yes, we have.
Okay.
I can give you the specific numbers. So year-to-date for overtime for the police department, we budgeted six thousand. And we've expended eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-three cents.
And, and Chief, where are most of the overtime money being utilized at? Is it in court? Or for all people taking vacation, people covering for the officers, people in schools? I mean, what, what's, what's, what's the, what's the issue here?
A small portion is for court. Most of it is for covering for other officers when they're, they're not able to cover their shifts.
Um, one more thing concerning the vehicles. Um, I have spoken to Morehead City pertaining to their vehicles that they have. Uh, uh, vehicles that have over a hundred miles on it. They actually have nineteen. Um, and they're, and, and the reason why they haven't, uh. Switch them out at this point in time is due to because. The council has not given them a one or two vehicle per year, which is causing their maintenance costs to go out the roof. For example, they got one vehicle right now that has to have twenty-five hundred dollars worth of maintenance done to it and the car's not even worth that much money. Uh, if it's worth a thousand dollars, that's a, that, that'd be an understatement. As I said, when these vehicles get over, this is by my experience, when you start passing up. Vehicles up to eighty, eighty-five thousand miles, you will have extensive maintenance and issues with these vehicles. With that being said, again, in my experience, when you have a vehicle that is not dependable enough to answer calls. With a person's life to be endangered, that is a serious issue. Um, I mean, we spoke about, um, people may possibly get injured out here on the roadway or at the parks. I'm all about safety, but we have to keep our officers safe and able to, um. I'm an advocate when it comes to the police department. I would say that. I'm also an advocate for, of it works. But we have to be able to make sure that the officer are able to answer the calls that are important to the system. And making sure our citizens are safe and are protected and serviced correctly. We need to make sure we look at this, uh, issue of vehicles very carefully. Um, again, with the numbers being said, I feel that the, 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 uh, enterprise leasing program is a good positive approach. That we need to look at. Um, we can save some money, some maintenance calls and make sure our officers can answer calls safely. And, uh, be dependable by our public and make sure they answer these calls. and, uh, be dependable by our public and make sure they answer these calls as soon and quickly as possible. That's all I have to say.
Chief, how much, uh, part-time, uh, of the sixteen thousand dollar or eighteen thousand dollars we put in your budget this year? How much of that's left?
Yeah, Kim, Sandy, can you answer that or Zach? Because I don't have the up-to-date.
Yeah, there's, um, seven thousand, three hundred sixty-two dollars and forty-four cents. But I guess if you take the, uh, you'd have to go do the math on that to divide the number of months that we're into this fiscal year and then multiply that by twelve to project what our year-end balance will be.
Well, you got, you got the luxury of, uh, having Mike Bishop now and so you're using him as much as you can. Uh, is that, that's, that's being correct in saying that, right?
As much as we can below the full-time equivalent. So that's, so if he gets above it, then he'd have, he'd be due benefits, um, which we're not paying any benefits right now.
Okay. And, and response to Commissioner Waters, uh, about the Moorhead cars, uh, Jeff, I'm getting, uh, totally different information about their calls than you are. So, uh, I'll just, I'll just leave it at that.
That information can strike from the one that handles the vehicles themselves.
Any more comments? Hey, Zach.
All right. So I think if that's everything for chief, we'll let chief, uh, get back to work unless he wants to stick around. But that's everything for the police department that we should be good with you get back to work.
Thanks, chief, appreciate your time.
Thank you all, yes, sir.
All right, and I've got the hybrid position breakdown and I'll send that out after this meeting. That's what's on the screen right now, I'll send that out to everybody to take a look at. Um, all right, so I guess we can go through, I know we're, we're pushing up on, uh, been on here for a while now. So, um, we'll try to, we'll try to kinda, I don't know if, do we want to take a quick break again? Do we need, does anybody need to do that?
I don't want a lunch break.
I don't need a break. I want to get it over with.
I'm good, if I need a break, if I need a break, I'll just step away from like I did thirty minutes ago.
Okay. You do, go ahead and start with, uh, governing board. And I guess just see if there's any questions about governing board, um, about that department.
Steve, we'll start with you on this one, if you got any comment.
Uh, no questions.
Don, you got any questions, comments?
I, I have a comment on governing board. Um, I think, uh, till after, uh, an item ten, nine, seventy-six, uh, election and, uh, referendum until after that's addressed at our regular board meetings, you know, you may have to adjust that. You know, it, it's on premature because we haven't made a decision on that.
Yeah, figured air on the side of caution there, but we might be taking that out.
You answered my questions, you answered my question.
The other option that changed.
On the, uh, that, that's a small amount. Uh, if the, uh, if the sound said we needed at least five thousand for a special attorney, uh, how do we have only twenty-nine hundred?
Well, that, that came in after this budget was sent out, that figure. So that's why that wouldn't be updated and we'd probably put that under the, uh, legal fees law, um, up here. It would amend that. The, uh, something I want to point out is that this year, um, is something we, we wanted to do for a while. So this year, uh, we took on doing all of the pre-positioning for contracts in-house. So I've, um, I wrote up three different RFTs and had the attorney review them. And now those have been posted and are out there. So that'll be saving us six thousand, five hundred dollars annually, um, from Johnson Environmental, he used to do that for us. Um, but I, I wanted to try to save us some money there. So we're, so that six thousand, five hundred can come out of the budget, um, and we can zero that out and eliminate that line item. So the budget will be decreasing, um, by that amount in the governing board. But at the time when we developed this budget originally in March, we hadn't done the RFTs yet. So just an update on that, that always excited to share when we can save some money somewhere.
Zach, just wondering, since we're gonna be doing that in-house, will we have to utilize the attorney more? Because he's gonna charge us, will we need to up the attorney fees at all for that?
So I don't anticipate that we'll have to up the attorney fees for the next fiscal year since on each of those RFTs, we did a three-year term. Um, we're, we're gonna do a three-year contract commencing on July one, twenty twenty and running through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, so we won't have to, he won't have to go back through and review anything next year. And this year, because we didn't have board meetings in April, um, there were no expenses above and beyond his usual monthly fee. So we were able to use his, um, set hours towards reviewing the RFTs. So we saved money by doing that as well.
That should offset, okay, good.
Jeff, you got any questions?
Uh, going back to the, uh, ten, nine, seventy-six. Um, is, we're gonna look at the board meeting about taking, doing something with that or is it pretty much early? Uh, because I don't thought there's a need for that at this point in time with what I was saying, county and cities are going through at this point in time with the coronavirus. Uh, looking at spending more money, getting people to spend more money, or we can look at other avenues as well.
So it is on the agenda for the board meeting on Monday to discuss the bond referendum. So I think we'll probably reach some direction there from where everybody wants to go.
Okay, thanks.
Any more questions about the governing board section, general?
I'd like to make a suggestion. We could save over eight thousand dollars if we eliminate salaries and wages. Nope.
I'm good with that.
I'm referring you from comment on that one. I'll just, I'll just wait everybody else's way in.
I'm, uh, I'm gonna assume Jim's talking about the board and not the staff.
Oh, exactly, that's, that's what it is, just to, just to eliminate salary and wages for, uh, uh, commissioners in there. It's not like, it's not like we're, you're making a lot out of this thing.
No, I'll, I'll just make a comment on that. Uh, this has come up before, this isn't the first time it's come up. Um, I have, um, over twenty years serving this town. And part of the time before we got Zach, it was, um, like twenty, thirty hours a week. It's, it's gone down considerably since then. Uh, this money that I get from this has funded my Roth in retirement. And, uh, and, uh, believe it or not, I've invested that wisely and that twenty years of service has generated a Roth for me that's got, uh, almost forty thousand dollars in it from this job. Uh, so that's my two cents.
All right, any more comments? And that will move on.
So for the purposes of coming back to y'all at the next meeting, um, just so I can interpret that, do we, you want that to stay the same and then we'll discuss it at the next meeting?
Yeah, I would leave it like it is and we'll discuss it.
Okay.
Yeah, and excuse me for interrupting, um, if there's things that we need to have an up or down vote on at the next meeting, and once we see, you know, the, the reconfigured numbers, uh, I think that's what we should do in the budget meeting, you know, because budget, budgeting and with the differences of opinion that we have on so many things is always a compromise. And I would hope that in June, we can have a, a budget that's unanimously approved through compromise. And some of these items either have to be in or have to be out to, uh, and I, I think that's at our next budget meeting.
Jim, I want to respond to your request about that, that line item, if I may. Uh, I don't know how everybody else does it, but I can assure you that I've contributed more money than I brought in, uh, to special events, uh, buying flowers, planting flowers, planting gardens, uh, it, the list goes on and on and on. So I, I just wanted to throw that out at you.
And we appreciate that.
I have to say, Commissioner Martin, your, um, mailbox has been a godsend. Otherwise, we wouldn't have had any way to get mail at town hall. We never knew that that Santa Claus mailbox would come in so handy.
You're welcome, and I forgot about all of that. I forgot about all the, uh, prizes and, uh, games that I've bought, made, uh, uh, not tooting my own horn, but, uh, I've spent a lot of money in that town for the kids' benefits and, uh, and, uh, this little hundred dollars a month goes, goes a little ways, but it surely don't cover. And that's just my way of giving back.
Well, I've had a lot of, uh, citizens ask me why we have the Santa mailbox out front. We've had a lot of, uh, fun comments about that.
Thank you.
All right, is that everything? All right, go on to general administration and can answer any questions that come up about general administration.
I got a couple. You ready?
Hang on a minute.
Item fifteen, uh, seven thirty-five. Uh, this, I noticed in the police department, you had an eighth officer and no uniforms in there. Yet there's uniforms in this, um, line item and it's up, uh, thousand and fifty dollars. What's the deal here?
So it's not just, um, it's not just uniforms under that line, there's also public notices, maps. Um, and our public notice cost has actually been pretty substantial. Um, pull up the, uh, get a general administration to show that. Bear with me just a moment. But since we have that requirement to run everything in the newspaper, that does add up.
Yeah, I'll have to pull it up, I'll take your word for it. I just want, I just wondered what, there was nothing in police department for uniforms and uniforms is up a thousand dollars and maybe it was in the wrong place.
See, that's what fifteen, fifteen, seven thirty-five. Uh, is he correct?
Yeah, forty, that, forty point eight two zero, uh, in the police department's uniforms, twenty-eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, please.
And I really don't know how they can get by with twenty-eight hundred dollars a year for uniform for officers. That's amazing to me. That is crazy.
Yeah, there's definitely, uh, and there, that twenty-eight hundred means that there's really not a whole lot of backup shirts and other equipment, so.
I don't know how they operate off twenty-eight hundred dollars for uniforms. There is, that's actually just enough money in a department for one officer. Maybe, maybe one officer. If you take an officer and hire him and equip him with everything they need, you'd be lucky to get by with twenty-eight hundred dollars. For what they need, from a class A uniform, class B uniform from Chief Miller, I'm sure you can attest to that too as well.
That, that is correct. You hired a new officer, you're gonna spend every bit of that twenty-eight hundred dollars just on him or her.
Yeah, that's definitely been a tight line item. And then you add in the rain gear, um, you add in when the boots wear out, I mean, it all, it's definitely a tight item. So I'll commit, I'll commend chief on being able to come in within that, but it's tight. I mean, he, he could probably go up on that, you know?
Okay, we spent enough on that one. Um, my screen just went out, is, am I still live?
Yeah, you're still here.
Yeah, you're still good, go on.
My second item was fifteen, seven eighty-one, professional development, uh, public executive leadership academy, who?
Uh, that would be me, uh, so I, I want to put in to attend, uh, that leadership academy that's in Chapel Hill, can get a scholarship.
I thought you went last year.
No, I haven't, I haven't gone to the public, uh, executive leadership academy, it's through the school government. Um, I think, I mean, it's a really great opportunity for, uh, for managers, um, all size municipalities. Um, good way to, to network with other managers, but also get, you know, more experience in all the different facets of the job. So I was gonna put in, do you request, uh, a scholarship, which would significantly decrease the cost? And then also I have family up in Raleigh, so I would stay with them to eliminate lodging expenses. Um, so that was kind of my thought process on that, if I could. And, and we might not extend that if, if the scholarship wouldn't come through, but I'll kind of say contention on that scholarship. But, um, that was something from former boards, um, that they wanted to see me attend that course. Um, and I think it would be very helpful for my, you know, for my professional development to be able to attend that.
Yeah, um, how many, well, that's why you answered the who question. Um, how, you know, shoot, that's a, that's a pretty hefty tuition payment. Uh, how, how long are you gonna be up there?
Yeah, so it's not all, it's not, that's not the only thing under that line. It also includes, um, and I can pull it up, I have a breakdown.
You know, I, I, I'm just wondering what the tuition for that is. I thought it was, if it was thirty-seven hundred dollars just to go to school up there, how long are you gonna be up there? A week, two weeks, month?
Um, it's broken out over a couple of weeks. Um, and so it, it's kind of incremental, but it, it's in the, uh, I guess in the timeframe of July. Um, depending on how the COVID nineteen stuff goes. But yeah, it's a multi-week, but it does, it's not the full week.
Um, okay.
And I think some of it might be over the weekends and stuff, so, um, that was the breakdown on there for that. But I think it's, you know, in terms of, in terms of professional development opportunities that are out there, um, for the town manager positions, I mean, that's probably one of the best ones. It's definitely something unique to North Carolina that is a really great opportunity. Um, I think I'll benefit from, from being there and to learn a lot by doing it, um, and I think the other.
You don't have to talk anymore on it, it's fine, that's fine. I, I just, I just didn't know what it was. I thought you went to that last year. Go ahead, drive on.
No, I got my, uh, flood plain manager certification last year. So I became a certified flood plain manager, um, that was in advance of taking that duty on for the town. So we, we've taken the flood plain management back in-house.
Okay.
But that was what I went to last year.
All right.
I got one question if Mike's done.
I'm done.
I've got one question, Zach. This Tahoe that we got, we're lucky enough to get a grant on. Are you letting all your staff and anybody that needs to travel to, uh, these, these, uh, training sessions use that Tahoe?
Yeah, it depends on the availability of it if we have of, I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna come down to what is the most cost-effective use of it. If we're using it a particular week and we have a bunch of, um, meetings that we have to go to to utilize that, then it's gonna be utilized for that purpose. So it's just depending on what the demands are for that particular week. Um, but yeah, it has been driven to training, conferences. Um, but then if it's needed for something else during that, that same week, I just make a decision based off of what is gonna fit best, um, for utilizing that, but.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying your expenses, uh, are up on, on, well, mileage reimbursement, if you will, you're, you're, you're reimbursing your, your, your folks for, uh, driving their own vehicles when we have that Tahoe at their disposal was, was my understanding for, for getting the thing.
Yeah, so I think if you're looking at this current fiscal year, in terms of what the costs have been, is that what you're referencing?
I'm looking at what your budget is for.
Okay, yeah, so that, that's a combination of.
Seven hundred ninety-five dollars travel to training.
Yeah.
Uh, which is in, uh, mileage and fuel. You know, we've had the, we pay for the fuel, or we have the vehicle, we sh- we shouldn't be paying, uh, staff members to drive their own vehicle when we have a vehicle that they should be able to use, is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, like I said, based on the demands of it, it, we try to balance it out so that, like, if, if somebody's gotta go to Chapel Hill for training, you know, during that timeframe, then there's got, like, whoever is driving for, you know, a, like, let's say I've got a meeting in New Bern, and somebody's gotta be in Chapel Hill for training, if I drive my personal vehicle to New Bern, then I'm still gonna have mileage associated with that, or vice versa, um, so that's kind of been, and if it's something like there's several different meetings in the area in a week, then it might work out about the same between what it's gonna cost in mileage to go to and from Morehead City and New Bern and other places, that's what it would be to drive it to Chapel Hill, um, so it's just kind of a, kind of ends up working out one way or another, but, um, with everybody having different demands on, on utilizing the vehicle, um, it just kind of comes down to what the best use of it is.
Okay.
Commissioner Martin?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. If, if I, um, if someone takes the vehicle, the Tahoe, to training, then I'm still having to pay, um, our zoning person, or Zach, or whoever else is going to, you know, do their weekly things, I'm having to pay mileage for that too, so one way or the other, I'm paying somebody mileage, so, you know.
Well, we, we have, uh, several pickup trucks setting it at, uh, Public Works, they can't drive them all at one time. We have that extra police car that Bishop's driving. I mean, I, I'm just, I'm just questioning the expense, and, uh, I, I think you could do a little better now, Zach. I'll leave it at that, that's all I've got. I think you could, you can trim that a little bit. Thank you.
Jim, you got any comment? About you, Jeff?
I'm good on my end, sir.
I think Jim is frozen.
Yeah, did you, did you call me?
I just wondered if you had any, you had any comments or questions about the general administration budget, before we move on?
What was this thing we were looking at, um, uh, about the, um, redoing the code, the, uh, ordinances? They were gonna put out some kind of a, I forget the name of it. What am I, what am I talking about, Zach?
U D O.
Yeah, for the U D O process, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Where's, where is it on here?
So we put it out, we did put an R F D out, and this came in right around when the COVID-19 outbreak kind of started, so I, I have to look to see how we came out on those. Um, I talked to a couple of folks about what I think might be a solution that we could do in-house, um, that's probably another discussion for another day, 'cause it's, and I think it's kind of in-depth about what some of the things are we could do. I think there's, there's some fundamental areas in our code of ordinances now that could be changed that would fix a lot of the issues that we're running into, and we can do that at no cost, as in, I could write the stuff and we can take it through the process and get it fixed, and defer this U D O further down the road. I think if we changed just a handful of sections in our current code of ordinances, we could fix at least ninety percent of the issues, because a lot of it comes back to some of the processes that are dictated in some of the sections, so if we did that, we'd save, you know, whatever, thirty, forty thousand dollars on the U D O, or at least defer that further down the road, but, um, and I would, that's, that's what I was thinking in terms of, you know, for this year's budget, and some of the uncertainties, maybe it's better to, we can do it in-house and make some corrections and address a lot of the issues, and maybe that's a better, that's a better approach to it.
All right, Jeff?
I have just, uh, one thing we may want to look at, and I, this is a suggestion, uh, going back to the Christmas bonuses, and I asked that question earlier, everybody gets the same amount of money. Maybe we should look at something like the longevity bonus during Christmas time, in other words, if you're an employee with less than five years, you get a certain percentage of your salary, and then five to ten is a certain percentage, five to fifteen, five to tw- uh, I'm going up, five to fifty, ten to fifteen, fifteen to twenty, and twenty, twenty-five, and up to thirty. No, we get a percentage of your salary, 'cause you got employees that'll be working for the town for a long time, and then the employee comes in, they get the same amount of money at Christmas time as a bonus, which I understand what a bonus is, but what are we doing with the employees that are staying with the town longer? Why are we, how are we rewarding them? So I believe we should look at the longevity, uh, uh, bonus program instead of just the Christmas bonus program.
Yeah, I think that's what we're definitely looking at.
Jim?
It's a, it's a Christmas present. You call it a Christmas bonus. It's not a bonus like you get in private sector. Uh, my kid gets these bonuses that I can't believe, uh, working in the private sector. It's just outrageous. Um, this is a Christmas present. It's like, everybody gets the same, uh, same candy canes, uh, just because you're older, you've been around longer, you don't get more candy canes than, than, than the kid who just showed up. Uh, it's, it's, it's a Christmas present, not a, it's not a, um, I mean, we've already got, uh, longevity increases in the, in the salaries. Um, I, I just, I, I kind of think that the two fifty is a, it's a small amount, but it's a, it's, it's more of a Merry Christmas than you've been doing a good job. Just Merry Christmas.
Any more comments, gentlemen?
I'm back online here. I, somehow the whole thing dropped, and, uh, I, I, I've hooked back up.
Yeah, right. You went and grabbed a sandwich, probably.
I didn't grab a sandwich. I don't eat lunch. I've told you that before, Mayor. Otherwise, I weighed three hundred.
So Mike, uh, now that you are back, uh, do you have any more comments regarding the general administration? If not, we'll move forward.
Um, hang on one second here. Um, I don't believe I do on general administration. No, I, I was, I, I said my piece there.
Okay, all right, Zach?
All right, good deal. On to Parks and Recreation. Um, the big difference in the budget between this current fiscal year and last fiscal year was that we had the site improvements in there, um, twenty-two thousand five hundred and one in this current year, and then don't have that in the next fiscal year, 'cause ideally, that will be extended this year, um, and taking care of all this fiscal year side of things.
Okay, so you're just gonna move it over? Uh, you're gonna reflect that number in the update?
Yeah, it depends, um, we might be able to get the, a good amount of the site improvements done in terms of the churn line and other features, might be able to get it done this year, but if not, then we'll just shift that over to the next year. Um, we're in the process of amending the Kama grant amount. They're increasing it by the amount that we need, um, so it might be subject, we might have to address that in the budget amendment if, if we need to do it that way, once that all gets approved and processed through the state.
Okay. What's next?
Jim, I was just gonna see if anybody else had it. Are we, uh, is that it? Anybody else got any comments? Okay, and next?
All right, going on to planning inspections, um, so this would reflect leaving everything at its current configuration, to not doing hybrid position, um, and then this version would show having a hybrid position, so, uh, looking at a difference of sixteen thousand ninety-six versus thirty-one thousand three hundred and four, um, and that would be creating that hybrid, um, but keep in mind, we'd have the savings on the police department side, um, and overtime, part-time, um, and the salary line, so it evens out, um, actually ends up, overall, we would save six thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars is what I would project by doing a hybrid position, so, um, just keep that kind of bottom line in mind when looking at that.
Yeah, um, I don't like the seven and a half, because that doesn't, that's, um, like, the, you ne- never know, there's either seven or eight, um, I think I understand, I'll wait, I'll wait and comment on that when I see the numbers in the police department and the numbers in the planning section. Uh, my, my expectation is that we have seven officers that, uh, my wish would be that the planning and zoning is picked up by the police department, uh, kind of, uh, on, on the part-time basis that it currently exists under, but I'll look, I'll wait to see your numbers.
Jim, you got anything?
I'm sorry?
Just wondering if you had any comments or questions. I just make sure everybody had an opportunity.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, how about you, Jeff?
I'm good right now. I believe we've already spoke about this already pertaining to the officers, and I've, I know, put my people next. Thank you.
Okay, all right. How about you, Steve?
I'm good, Will, thanks.
And Don?
I'm good also.
All righty, moving on.
All right, so we've already done Public Works Department, um, we can talk about power bill and street maintenance. I think we touched on that earlier, that there was a five percent increase, um, in the power bill fund that we anticipate receiving, so there's a little bit more allocated towards street maintenance, um, in the, uh, upcoming fiscal year.
Comment?
Go ahead, Steve.
Folks, I, 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 I want to just tell you how I feel about this power bill. Our infrastructure is crumbling around us. This power bill will not sustain our paving efforts that are needed in this town. Uh, I think everybody knows that, and, and especially after the hurricane recovery of Florence, all the heavy equipment that, matter of fact, they're still coming in here. They're moving houses, tearing houses down. They've damaged our streets. Uh, Bay Shore, for instance, did not get any paving efforts for the spring paving, uh, not gonna cry about that. I, I'm cer- I know Zach's got, got it covered. He's got some, uh, thoughts on that and some plans. Uh, our covers, if we didn't learn but one lesson in the hurricane, uh, Star, that Star Hill cover collapsed, we need to be looking at every under-road cover we have in this town. They're all sagging, deteriorating, and this power bill, we're fooling ourselves to think that seventy thousand dollars is gonna, uh, uh, address our needs, especially in the near future. So what I'm advocating is we take a certain amount of money out of the reserve fund and put it in a designated partnering fund, that, that, that companion fund with power money, to get caught up on some of our paving efforts. I don't know how much that should be. Zach could probably get a figure for that, but I, I certainly think we need to be discussing that. There, there's more s- to services provided to our town than a police department, admin department, and public works department. Uh, we, we, I can't stress enough again, we need to really be paying attention to our paving efforts, and the only solution I have is, uh, creating companion type, uh, reserve fund for, for, for paving efforts. That's all I have.
Yeah, and after that, I think we need an inventory of the streets, uh, and identify, to identify by, by street address, intersection, what we actually need in, in to prioritize. So we know what, what kind of ex- you have to do that in order to figure out what kind of expenses we're gonna run into.
I agree, Jim, but we've never had a professional take a look at our under-street covers, to my knowledge, unless, uh, you know, Mike's been around a hundred years, he may have had it done before and have it stashed away somewhere, but to my knowledge, it's never been addressed, and we're just asking for another disaster like the Star Hill cover that collapsed. I know in my neighborhood, and Zach can verify this, we have a huge, uh, problem with these culverts, go- going across these culverts that are settled and/or deteriorated. Nobody knows what they're ma- if they're made out of metal, concrete, uh, wood, or what else, and I'm just saying, it's, uh, we're sitting around here and not addressing these things, it's gonna come back and bite us sooner rather than later, and I think we need to get prepared and get on top of it.
Just to mention to everybody too, that, um, on the website, we do have a, a map available that has all of our, um, street paving projects. They're all the green lines indicate areas that have been resurfaced. I'll be updating these, some of these red lines, these were covered in this recent project, and then yellow coming across the road shows the location of culverts, um, like here's that one over in Bay Shore Park on Park Avenue, um, where we know based off that some of these settling, that that's gonna be a future need. Um, there's also on Vogue Sound Drive, so we do have, um, locations. Uh, we don't have the ability to scope those types, um, but in the future, it would be great to get somebody in here and scope those to see if there is any collapse, um, or issues, and then also determine material length and everything else, probably get an inventory together. Um, definitely something I think we should continue to look at.
We'll talk to funding, where you need to get this done in your estimations, Zach, for budget purposes.
I'd have to come back to you with an exact, or beaten ballpark. I mean, to get all the roads that need to be done, that are pressing, um, is one thing, and then to address these culverts is another, um, so all of these culverts are, are aging and will need to be addressed in future years, um, some are more critical than others, but, uh, we did tackle a lot of hot topics on this recent paving project, um, in terms of some of the road conditions, but I thought, so that there's also a lot of places that have not yet been addressed, um, so if we really did an inventory to identify some of those other areas, um, you know, some of these other points on the map, um, are pothole locations, and people put in submissions through our online pothole reporting form, and then, so the way that it's done now is people report the potholes, and Public Works will also observe where the potholes are and go and patch them, but right now, people are adding these essentially to the map, and then when Alex and the crew go out and fix it, then we're checking them off that they've been completed, so folks can see in real time that the potholes are getting addressed, but there's a lot more potholes out here than, than are on here, so it'll, to do a full inventory, um, you know, it, and to do some cost projections, it'd probably be good to get one of the contractors we work with to come in and assist us, um, and some of them, I think, would, they'd probably do that free of charge and look at. Um, and some of them, I think, would, they'd probably do that free of charge and look at what our needs are and help us develop, uh, an expanded, uh, list.
Zach, I think that is the most important, uh, issue facing our town today, is, is our infrastructure. And the lack of, uh, addressing it is, like I said earlier, is just gonna, it's gonna come back to haunt us one day. I'm surprised it already hasn't, and it did in the form of that one cover, so, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get off the soapbox and let some other commissioners speak about it. Thank you, Zach.
Anybody else got any comments?
I just, I, I agree, I would say I agree with Steve on that, that we do need to take a look. I would need, we would need to see the numbers, what, what we're looking at, but I think that we should look at moving some monies where they need to be moved, so we've got the, we have the funds needed to start making some of these repairs. Because like, I don't know how many culverts we got, but, you know, I live over here behind the one that, that collapsed from Star Hill, and I remember, and now, then Pine Lake Road got tore up because everybody was using that for, you know, six months driving back and forth. So I, I definitely think that's something we need to take a look at.
I have to agree with what they said also pertaining to the infrastructure. That's one of the things that was spoke about, uh, last November about, about our town. I think it is one of the most important, if not the most important pertaining to this town, is our infrastructure. We need to take care of our streets so we can take care of our people, get back and forth to their homes. Not only that, but also for the first responders, we have to think about that as well. Um, yeah, we need to look at some where we, how we can to, uh, we need to, uh, get this funded somehow or another to improve our streets, I'm, I'm all about that, yes sir.
Jim, you got any comments?
No, other than like I said, first thing you need to do is get an inventory to see what's, what's needed. Uh, whether public works can do that, or we need some, someone more professional. Uh, that would give us a starting point, you know, what to do first, because you have to prioritize this stuff, triage. And, uh, but we gotta get an inventory first to find out where the problems are, why.
But you, Mike?
Uh, there was an, an inventory of all of that done, God, it's gotta go back a few years. Richard Hunt was here when that happened, so, uh, tells you about how many years ago it was, but, and it's gotten worse since it. But it was an inventory, a spreadsheet of every place it needed, whether it needed pothole, culvert, or overlay. There's also a drawing down there in the town hall that shows the inlet and discharge of every culvert in the town, uh, on a scaled map. So those are tools that anybody working on this can, uh, probably put it in the form of a, uh, spreadsheet and be very helpful to Zach. That's all.
All right, any more comments? All right, Zach?
All right, yeah, and I'll, I'll be updating this map to show our most recent project, but, um, I'll get with Alex too, because he maintains the list, and we'll get some additional locations added on here. Um, the good thing about this is that it also generates, we have an Excel sheet that corresponds with all this and shows us the length, distance, and all that, so we can calculate our cost per square yard, um, for doing some of the overlay, uh, based off, which will fluctuate based off asphalt price, but, um, so I think we should be able to get pretty close, but, uh, I definitely think if we could get somebody in here too, one of the paving companies, that'd be beneficial, um, the experts that work with it every day, so. There's a lot of spots that, you know, are gonna be future issues, where there's alligator cracks and things like that, but adjusting our approach to be more preventative and dealing with potholes when they're, you know, the size of a, the size of a fist, rather than when the, you know, a huge gaping hole in the road is also another change that I think we've made. Um, we're getting more proactive on the maintenance side, which is good, so. Um, getting to the public grounds, utilities and building salon, our, our, uh, department, um, the only significant item in there that I think's already been mentioned was the, um, public works, uh, building, and I know that we're gonna look at that further, um, but all, like I said, we've gotten, uh, several estimates, so we'll put those together. Um, you know, I, I think if we can put something up in the site that was cleared over there that's got four sides, but that is basic bare bones, meets the code, and can get the equipment out of the elements, I think that would be, um, a good solution, and I, I think we could probably do that in the ballpark of what we've got in the C I P. We might have to add a little bit more on there, but, um, but I'm gonna see how close we can get to it and, and get back to everybody with that information.
I just wanna throw out there, Zach, uh, thanks for finally, finally painting our town hall building. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks, Public Works Department and Alex and them for, for that, so.
All right, anybody got any more comments on that? All right, Zach?
All right, one area, the only other area that might have to get changed on here is pertaining to replacing some of the signs, um, and that's something, um, I, I know I talked with Commissioner Waters about the other day, about some of the, uh, the signage we have in town. Um, but I think that's, that's gonna be a priority in the next couple of months, is to get some of these street signs, stop signs installed, um, some other things, but that's a project we have going on right now. A lot of our signage isn't as off its reflectivity, or it's got growth on it and other issues, so, um, so we're gonna be tackling that and, uh, and getting some of that upgraded, and also looking at maybe converting to some four-way stops instead of two-way stops, and that's something that Commissioner Waters, um, and I talked about, so I'd like to put that on a future agenda to talk about that as a deterrent to some of the speeding at some locations in town, so. All right, so we talked about the police department, um, and then going on to the environmental and emergency preparation department, um, calculated a little bit of an increase on the landfill, uh, landfill fees side, and that's based off of what we're seeing in terms of our costs. Um, and then the C P I increased to two point three percent, which is, uh, what is pursuant to our contract with, uh, G F L, or G F I, I think it's G F L, um, Waste Industries is how I still remember them as, um, and then on the leaf and limb, um, you know, we still have the agreement with Emerald Isle for twenty-one thousand dollars, uh, for the two annual pickups. I've added in there, um, some additional funds in the amount of four thousand dollars. Um, I think that's important to have that in there for when our public works folks have to do minor pickups after a storm, and that they need to take it up there to the Hibbs Road, um, site and be able to, uh, dispose of it. So I've increased that based off of some of the costs we're seeing, uh, when we do have, you know, like a, you know, thunderstorm or something move through town. Um, their practice is to take everything up there and dispose of it rather than storing or anything, so, um, that's, uh, an adjustment as well, so that's where that cost is, is reflective of, um, I think that's the main, the main stuff under that, uh, under that particular, um, budget or department.
Yeah, the only comment I would have, um, at some point in time, you know, this deal we got with Emerald Isle and the pickup is, uh, is incredibly impressive, um, I think at some point in time, and maybe in conjunction with Emerald Isle, we look at getting a, uh, yard debris site here locally that, uh, we might partner with them and either purchasing it and using it that doesn't require the run into Hibbs Road. Uh, you know, that's the big killer, uh, when you have to go that far, uh, to dump a load, so. Nothing for this year, but something we ought to think of, think of perhaps looking into in the future.
I can maybe add something to that, Mike, um, where Emerald Isle takes their debris to, along with our debris to, is right there off Bog Loop Road with Sunland property. And what they do is that they, um, well, they burn up, they burn it up right there on site. They deliver it on site, and then the personnel there burns it. So we may want to look to calling up Sunland, when we do have some extra debris, to see if we could drop it off on the same property as well, let them dispose of it as, uh, as they normally do.
Okay, yeah, just a, a little bit of background on that without getting into the specifics here, um, that, we tried that option, but that unfortunately wasn't an option for us, and I'll just kinda leave it at that on that particular site, but I would definitely like to see us identify a site that's closer than having to go to Hibbs.
I'd like to add that, uh, uh, Zach, I, I fielded you in on this, uh, and, and I think maybe somebody else, but, uh, the conversation had come up between myself and some commissioners over at Emerald Isle. They are actively looking for a site, from my understanding. Uh, they want to include a, uh, emergency operations center on that site, also, uh, and, and I asked Zach to start the conversation with, is it Matt Zap over there on Emerald Isle and see if that's a possibility that we could partner with them on this, because we're fooling ourselves once again if we think we could continue to provide leaf and limb pickup without a place for the, the stuff to go to, and, uh, Hibbs Road would, is, is, is out of the question as far away as it is, in my opinion, but they're actively, uh, they're actively looking for a site, and I, I have asked the question if they would be willing to partner with us and got good feedback from that, and I have asked Zach to talk to Matt Zap and take it from there, that's, I just, I don't know if he's done that, uh, I'm sure he will, he'll let us know when he has. Thank you.
Yeah, we've had some preliminary discussions and also talked with, uh, with Artie as well. Um, but it's something I think over the coming weeks and months, we'll, we definitely wanna dive further in and see if we can identify a property and work out the logistics of it. Um, I think it's, it's imperative when we have storm events, that when the county doesn't open up a temporary debris site, like we saw after Hurricane Dorian, we're, we're gonna have to have a site that is convenient for us to take stuff to, rather than having to bring it up to Hibbs, so I think that's definitely something, um, that we need to, to be looking at, and it has a lot of merit to it, because, uh, I would predict that in the future, on similar storms to what Dorian was, if the county doesn't open up sites, we're gonna be in the same spot of having to take it up to Hibbs, which takes, I mean, we just don't have the capacity with our equipment and our trucks. I mean, it, it's hundreds and hundreds of loads worth of debris because of the, the minimal capacity of our trucks, so, um, it's very challenging to, to have to pick it up in-house when there's uncertainty of whether it's gonna be a FEMA reimbursable then, and, you know, the uncertainty that came after the last storm, so definitely would like to find something close by that is convenient and would save a lot of gas and time.
Anybody else got any comments? Okay, Zach?
All right, well, that, that covers all of our expense side of things, um, let me pull up the, let me pull up the other one that shows. On the revenues, I think I kinda ran through that earlier, um, if there's any questions on the revenue side, I'd be happy to try to answer those. Um, I think you will have to make a couple of adjustments, and there might still be adjustments that come based off of how many people in town appeal, appeal their property valuation. Um, I know there was some pending appeals out there, so that is going to fluctuate probably even more so than that amount there. Um, but it's probably in the ballpark, um, I would say it might go down a couple thousand dollars on the ad forum, uh, revenue side. Um, other than that, pretty much everything else anticipating is gonna be in the ballpark and pretty close to what we're anticipating getting.
Completely unrelated, I just wanted to make sure if everybody didn't know that Ken Jones, mayor of Pine Noe Shores, has passed away. Did y'all hear that?
No, I didn't.
Yeah.
Wow.
Just got a message about it, so, I don't know any of the, the details, but.
Was that unexpected?
Sad news.
Sandy, was that unexpected?
Mike's off, Sandy.
It's Michael.
I was reading on the, I just switched over to, um, look on the news, and it doesn't tell me anything other than, um, the board, the Board of Commissioners and staff of the town of Pine Noe Shores announced the passing of Mayor Ken Jones. Um, no details, so it, it doesn't say anything. Um, let me look at this other one. Now, it's, it's not given any details, it doesn't even say when, um, it just says he died suddenly. In his sleep, it says Pine Noe Shores announced this afternoon that, um, died suddenly, doesn't say anything, so, I guess nobody's let out any information, but I just thought all of you might wanna know it. So, I mean, we're all kind of tight, so. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt with bad news, but I knew y'all would wanna know that.
Thanks for the information.
Yeah, Brad Rich shared in the comment box that, that he was at the board meeting Wednesday, so I'd say that's definitely, and I just talked to the town manager there yesterday, so that's definitely a, a shock, and sad to hear that, but he's been a good, good ally of the town and a good, uh, had a great relationship with him.
Well, Zach, I'm sure that, uh, your, or Mayor Baker will be sending the town cap car rest condolences, so, some form, thank you.
Absolutely. All right, so anybody got any comments about the revenue?
I'm sorry, I know I'm interrupting again, but that, that's something we might want to discuss, because since I've been here, there's been nothing in our budget for us to send anything unless we did it out of the governing board's miscellaneous fund to send any type of card, flowers, condolences, anything, um, and that, that's something that y'all as, as commissioners might want to discuss and decide, because what we do for one, we should do for all. Um, and that even includes our own staff, um, you know, we, if, if we're gonna send something for our staff members, you know, um, and, and there's been some, some different ones that have said things, and, and I know that we as staff have taken up our own personal money and sent to different ones, which is fine, but then, and I won't go into any details, but we had one commissioner, past commissioner that was upset that we didn't send something to one staff member, and I said, I can't do it for one and not the others. Um, so that, that's something that maybe as a group, y'all might wanna discuss. What would be the, i- is that something you wanna put money in there for, even a small amount? Something we would want to do for, you know, people in the community, how y'all would want to handle that, just a suggestion.
Under charitable contributions, you've got sympathy items, around sixty bucks.
That's a typical petty cash thing, I don't think we need to spend any time on it, you know, you're talking a few bucks.
Yeah, I was just gonna add that there's also been times where we wanted to recognize, uh, you, you know, another municipality for doing a, a good job for us, um, you know, Mayor Baker can probably reference recently with, you know, the good work Emerald Isle did when they came in and helped us, you know, and did that pickup for us, and just, you know, to recognize their effort, um, just like after Hurricane Dorian. And just, you know, to recognize their efforts, um, just like after Hurricane Dorian, when the different towns sent in um their crews and their public works department to help us clean up. Um, I don't, I don't know that that's enough in there to be able to really do what I'd like for us to be able to do to kinda recognize folks. Cause you know, they, we've had some, some towns in the area that really gone above and beyond to help us in our time of need. Um, and a step to the plate. So um, that is something I, I'd like to maybe look at expanding a little bit more on um, to give us some flexibility to recognize folks uh when they help us out.
Make a recommendation.
Yeah, just go ahead and do that, Zach. And uh, you've already got the one light item, but if we need to add another uh, you know, to put it on the board as, as, as far as administration or where you see it to be appropriately uh stuck, go ahead and, you know, have that for us in the next meeting to look at.
Yeah, and I think what happens too sometimes is that sympathy items that's been cut into because it's not just these organizations that request donations from us. Sometimes it's more, and sometimes um in the past, people have wanted to give more to these eight different organizations. So that's what I think is cut into it. So I, I think we definitely need to go up a little bit on that line and give us some more flexibility. And I'll, I'll put together an, an amount and have that up the next uh budget meeting.
Good, appreciate it. All right, any more comments? All right, moving right along.
All right, I think that's uh, I think that's everything we got through all the, all the departments, um revenues and expenditures. And uh, we'll go back and um, what I'll do is I'm gonna add two more columns on the, on the sheet to show the comparison between uh the, uh going with the enterprise fleet management and going with, sticking with our capital improvement program so that everybody can kinda compare that. And I'll also send out the breakdown for the hybrid position about how that would impact the budget. Um, and show, show how that would be uh dispersed between the two departments. Um, I think that was the, I think that was the main items that we wanted to, to address. And then as, yeah, I think that was the main items. If there's anything I'm missing, um, I think those were the top ones that are gonna have the most substantial impact in terms of where our numbers are at, so.
Yeah, the build, the buildings, Zach, don't forget the building. And, and anything, anything else that we wanna vote on, we can, we can bring it up at a budget meeting, I would think, uh, line item, so to speak.
It's just, just to go back over, go ahead Steve, I'm sorry.
I'd like for you to still address the uh, the uh compatible uh paving fund too, Zach, if you will. There were several major issues we discussed today. I know there's a lot been said. I hope you, I hope you can sort it out.
Well, that's why it's good to do recap.
The last two years, we went line by line by line with it. It's, it's impossible to do via this, this platform we're on now. It's not, can't do it.
All right, so just to back up and reiterate, we got the, agreed that Monday night, we're gonna have a regular meeting. It'll be via the go-to meeting and then we'll meet back together following Friday to uh address the public 24 hour. And uh, that'll also be a regular type budget meeting, I mean, excuse me, board meeting. So you guys wanna go ahead and look at your schedules and try to uh look at when we wanna try to do our next budget meeting? I would say probably that following week, last week of May or first week of June. I'm pretty wide open, so.
I would recommend, yeah, June, I'd recommend the later the better, Zach, and give us time to study what different scenarios you're gonna give us. That's just my opinion. I'm, I'm like the mayor, I'm pretty well flexible.
Maybe the first week in June, and by then maybe, you know, we'll be able to meet face to face and look at all the stuff. In that way, if anybody's got any more questions, they can, they can, you know, bring those to you. Cause there again, we're not in a great big hurry here. And I just wanna say thank you for the, I think it's a great budget document that he's come up with. I mean, that, that uh, I think a lot of thought went into it. And there again, it's up to us to decide what to pick and choose and what we agree to. So thank you, Zach, for producing all this. So has anybody got a date they'd just like to throw out there, maybe for the first week in June?
Especially if it's like a Monday or Friday, Tuesdays and Thursdays, I'm kinda like jammed up on this two days. Um, but I could do evenings, I could do afternoon or evening, but mornings, it's about four o'clock, I'm either.
I prefer mornings because as you see, see how it, how it goes, uh, we, we get loffwinded, or at least I do.
Maybe the first, Monday, June 1st. How does everybody look for that in the morning?
That's, that's fine with me, as long as we get a reminder.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
June 1st, what time?
10 o'clock.
That's fine with me.
Anybody else got any issues with that? If not, we'll, we'll pin it in.
And the, and the one next Friday, that's also at 10 o'clock, is that correct? Next week, Friday?
Yeah, Friday at 10 o'clock and June 1st. That's May 22nd and June 1st.
Right. Everybody good with that?
And then Monday night, a regular one.
Yes, yes. Monday night's regular time.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Be there.
Now, we'll be meeting at the town hall at all as far as in person for the, for the board of commissioners meeting and then some virtual meetings. Zach, is that a question for you, from there?
I think we decided that uh if, if you wanna meet at town hall, you can. It'll just be a double effort because we'll still have to, because it's, some of the commissioners would still be uh virtual. We'd still be, you know, having to have the next meeting Friday because of the public uh comment, new legislation that got there. That's the only big draw. That was the main reason. I wanna try to personally so we could do away with having, you know, two meetings. But it looks like uh, they can't get a consensus on that, so we'll just, we'll just meet with the go-to meeting. Any more questions or comments?
Hopefully on that June 1st meeting, um, we could do something, maybe we can do it out there on the stage if need be and spread everybody out if the weather's, if the weather's cooperating.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. It just depends on uh the, the tourist influx of tourists we get from uh hotspots that come into Emerald Isle. That's, that's my biggest concern. And for some of us that uh, our family members may have some compromised health issues, we gotta err on the side of caution. I hope y'all understand that, that part of it.
Yeah, I just want to let you know, we've got a vacation rental on the island. And uh, our, our reservations are almost nil. Uh, people just aren't swarming to the beach, at least for on a weekly basis.
You're gonna, you're gonna see a spike in my opinion, but uh, I hope not. I, I, I have not set foot in a store since the last time I saw all of y'all's faces in person. No, zero. I've had no personal contact with another human being in about eight weeks. I'm a hobo. Or a, what do you call it?
Hermit.
Hermit. Hermit, yeah.
Well, there's still no toilet paper, so you haven't missed anything.
Well, I've been lucky. I, I saw this coming, so uh, I stocked up. And buddy of mine just ordered uh, found a supplier that he, he bought 90 rolls for $95. Now, what is he gonna do with 90 rolls? I don't know. But uh, anyway, good to see all you guys anyway.
All right, well, if everybody's good, uh, we'll call it an afternoon. Thank you, guys. And just make sure everybody's got those dates down and we'll see you Monday night at 6:00. If anybody's got any questions, just let Zach know. And did you record this, by the way, Zach? I, I forgot to hit the button myself.
Yes, yeah, it's recorded and uh, so we, I'll get that over to Sherri. She's been taking minutes, but she'll have that as a backup too. Um, so we should be uh, should be good to go. Look forward to seeing everybody on Monday.
All right. Well, thanks, guys. Appreciate your time today. Y'all have a wonderful day.
Yeah, everybody too.